Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Amy Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to just take a moment. Over the last week Omaha lost a true patriot and somebody that cared a lot about our city and our state. Senator Dave Karns passed away. He was appointed as a U.S. Senator in 1987 and has been an asset to our community ever since, ever since then. I can tell you that he's someone that we all admired for his dedication to our community. And Senator Karns did not put politics first. Senator Karns was respected by members of both parties and I think that was shown as this council unanimously approved him to be our lobbyist for the city of Omaha. Because Senator Karns spent his life caring about the people of this city and caring about the needs of the citizens and not based on politics at all and I think that's shown by the people that stated how much he will be missed. From Senator Fisher to Senator Nelson, Commissioner Boyle, Hal Dobbs. He was somebody that was respected by all of us and he respected all of us and even supported all of us and his party didn't make a difference to him because he did truly care about the city. He also dedicated himself to numerous nonprofits. One being he started The Kicks for the Cure, which was part of his former wife has passed away of cancer, I believe about 20 years ago. And he spent a lot of time raising money for cancer research. Unfortunately, we lost Senator Karns to cancer within this last week. But he also raised money for Omaha Home for the Boys, for Methodist Hospital. He really was always there if you needed him and were calling him. You would see him at various fundraisers, always caring about the community and trying to raise money. And his wife Chris as well continued that with the family as she balanced families. She's also on our planning board and West Side Board of Education. And so both of them together have done a lot for our community and I can tell you that our heart breaks for Chris, for Senator Karns' six daughters that he left behind. And I would like to just take a moment of silence in honor of Senator Karns. Thank you all.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Vistancia located northwest of Turner and 10th and Fort Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Ford Zero West Center Road appearing on behalf of the project applicant Falcone Land Development. This project is a existing subdivision that we're currently building out on 204th and Fort Street. I'll wait for this to come up. The original plat for this development is already being approved. What we're replating here is actually the original farm acreage, which is this small parcel right here. 10 lots, I'm sorry, 12 lots coming out of there. And then we're actually connecting some of the streets, 205th Street as well as Ogden Street. So with this, it'll fill out Phase 1 of Vistancia and we're here for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the 39 Harney Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3926 Harney Street in an amount up to $678,835.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is an infill redevelopment project in the Blackstone Business District. The developer, Jett Ventures, Jett Ventures LLC proposes to take this site that you see highlighted in blue, the northeast of 40th and Harney. Take the site that is underutilized as well as a vacant area with some dilapidated structures. One of them has a code violation and convert it into a restaurant, bar and event space. Here is a rendering. I don't know if you can zoom in on it. But the rendering basically shows that this is the restaurant. Here is the outdoor space. There's a platform, lower platform, and then a rooftop. And then this is the event center over here to the south, or excuse me, the east of the restaurant. This particular development will complement retail and restaurant businesses in the Blackstone District, Business District. The TIF Committee has given approval. It does comply with our master plan goals as well as the community development law. They are contributing 18,000 of their TIF proceeds to the Midtown Public Improvement Fund for public infrastructure improvements in that midtown area. Their TIF request is just over $678,000 for an investment of just over 3.9 million. I do believe the attorney, Michael Sands, is here representing the owner. With that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the developer. My client's excited to bring this project to the Blackstone area. He has spoken with the local BIDs and the neighborhood with overwhelmingly positive feedback. So we ask for your support on this and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Again, I'm opposed to TIF in most cases. Because I don't think once again that the citizens are actually explained very much to about it. There is in one way, shape, form or another, the city's participation, which, as I understand it, maybe from other articles in the past and from NTF issue papers, the Omaha Land Bank might be involved in some of this. I didn't know we were in the banking business. KETV had a story just the other night, I think night before last, talking about low-income housing nonprofit who's having trouble now with having enough money. He was interviewed at length on this story. He says he's running out of money, but he depends on the city council. The city, apparently some kind of banking arrangement, arranging loans. It costs him $200,000 to build this place. Low-income people can buy it.
Mr. Store, you gotta get back on track or tie in what you're saying to this item.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, the land bank has nothing to do with this property. Thank you.
Second. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
I'd like to state that the city is not making any loans at this point and we are not acting as a bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Mahalo Polk Company located at 6920 Pacific Street, Suite 110.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Come on down. Are you with number eight? Get your name and address, please.
Hannah Han and I'm here for my business liquor license for 6920 Pacific Street, Suite 110.
Thank you. Would you pull those two microphones closer together, please? Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Proponent. Is this on item number eight?
Yes, it is. My name is Reagan Simons, 17524 Harrison. I'm a proponent of number eight because I support small businesses. Mahalo Polk has some very interesting, oh, forgot to grab a picture of their menu.
Did we get your address?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I am a proponent of number eight because I support small businesses. Mahalo Polk has some interesting menu items that would actually pair nicely with a glass of wine or other drinks. Small businesses are struggling and alcohol is actually a big moneymaker. Women have had a 41% increase in drinking since March. And I actually read somewhere that day drinking is up like 600%, but I don't know if that's true, so don't quote me. Apparently, we're all pretty stressed out due to COVID restrictions put on our families and small businesses by politicians and medical experts like Dr. Khan, who recently accused all Nebraska Republicans of being members of the KKK on his Twitter page. I'm not much of a drinker myself, but for those who are, oh, I'm getting back on topic, sorry. For those who are.
You're out of order.
I just wanted to say we all need a little bit more places that we can drink and unwind. So I do support this. Thank you.
You can remove that overhead, please. And if Ms. Simons is out of order again, please remove her from the chamber. Are there any other proponents or opponents on number eight? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Ames Avenue Convenience Store located at 4145 Ames Avenue.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is, as it states here, a reorganization, a corporate reorganization due to a death in the family. Same will be true for the next item as well. We're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the owner here?
Mr. Morandi is the manager and he's here.
Okay, if Mr. Morandi could come up, please. And I need to be honest with everybody. I'm going to have a hard time supporting this one without some sort of agreement that we're not going to, we're going to stop selling to minors. That's got to happen. Name and address for the record, please.
Sam Moranti, 30, 2411 O Street.
Mr. Morandi, I'm sitting here with an email that indicates that there have been a number of times that liquor has been sold to minors at this store. I want to know what the plan is going to be to cease and desist selling to minors.
There have been violations in the past 20 years?
No, there's one 2019.
Okay, and prior to that?
Prior to that, 2010.
Okay. So between 2010 and 2019?
There should be none. There should be none.
I don't disagree. We have a couple of high-volume stores and the clerks. In one of those instances, if not two, the clerk actually asked for the identification and simply didn't do the math. And when I asked him about it, he said he didn't, he just didn't want to get embarrassed and not figure out the differences of those, the math computation. And so that's when we ordered the electronic devices that do the electronic program relative to the AIDS statement. And we have those in place now.
Okay, Mr. Morandi, here's what I would agree to. And I just want for the record, if you're okay with this.
Go ahead.
If there is one more sale to minors, you come before the Liquor Committee right away.
Yes.
Okay?
Sure.
And I will be requesting a long form if there's another sale to another minor. I just want you to know that. I don't need you to respond to it. I just need you to understand how seriously I take selling to minors. Okay? All right, if there's one more sale, then for the clerk, I would like to, for the record, that they are to appear before the Liquor Committee. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, is that a motion with a condition? Second, roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
You've been recommended for approval with that condition.
Item 10, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for BJ's located at 4122 Ames Avenue.
Again, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. The same management, the same reorganization. We're here for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The same for this particular establishment as well.
Same motion, same condition?
Same motion, same second.
You understand that, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Moranti?
We're fine.
Okay, second, roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for TNA Convenience located at 3805 Lake Street.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Michael Polk, 2712 South 87th Ave., Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. Here with the owner of TNA Convenience, Tariq Ali, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. In this particular instance, this is a new owner, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and in the past, I just want the owner to know, I mean, I'm not making the same motion in this particular instance, but I do want the owner to know that there have been several complaints about selling to minors in the past at this establishment as well. So as long as you're aware of that and understand the seriousness with which, at least in my district, how I take selling to minors, I just need for you to be aware of that. All right?
Understood.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Was that a motion? Second, roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class L liquor license for Bearded Brewer Artisan Ales located at 18039 Arap Plaza, Number 107 and 108.
The public hearing on item 11, excuse me, 12, begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Appearing here with Mr. Jeron, who is, this is a brew pub going in 180th and, where's her address? 180th and Q, excuse me. And we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Rain Ultra Lounge located at 8919 North 30th Street. A's Communications and Opposition.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members, again, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. I'm here with Mr. English, who is the proposed new owner. You'll require, remember that this location had some issues. The license was ultimately canceled out there. But he was, has been the day bartender for years out there, of and on, including the prior bar, which was Three Cs, which was more of a neighborhood bar. And that's what he intends to return it to, if approved. He's also willing to submit to an applicant, to a condition of no DJ music whatsoever. So the issue that caused the problem before was a nightclub activity. He intends none of that. He's also going to renew more frequent food there. Doesn't have a kitchen, but he's going to have neighborhood catering events. Special football games, that type thing. He might do some karaoke. That'd be the extent of the entertainment. And again, there is absolutely no involvement with the prior management, prior owner. This is a new corporation, a new venture for him. He is also a licensed Realtor, so he has, you know, he has a stake in this game. So he's here. He has had a meeting with the neighbors. I'm not sure. Everybody's on board. I think some are. We have some letters which we filed with the clerk in support. I guess with that, we're here for questions that you might have and then maybe reserve a couple of minutes in rebuttal, should it be necessary.
Thank you. If you could stick close by, we were leaving the front row center open for distancing. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Okay, so if you two could sit down on the side here and then if your opponents, you can approach one at a time, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, City Council. It's good to be back here talking about the Rain Lounge again. My wife and I submitted a email yesterday.
I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. John Lemon, L E M E N, 3114 Fillmore Street, Omaha, 68112. We're located about 700 feet west of the bar.
Thank you.
We, my wife and I submitted an email yesterday to the clerk with our concerns that they're going to continue operations under the Rain Ultra Lounge name, which as you recall, has a lot of baggage associated with it. There's homicide, multiple tavern reports, disturbances. We're also concerned that the possible relationship between the new owner and the former owner, Sean's going to be making payments to him monthly, so we're not totally convinced that there's a separation of powers there. There might be some influence from Mr. Overton. Couple other things I noticed, went through the Planning Department report. They caught most of the stuff they missed the last time around. They got that the outside area is only 40 feet from the nearest residence. And it is 235 feet from the nearest park. It's 235 feet from the Community Center Library in Fillmore Park. Another troubling thing I saw in there that Inspector missed was under the heading of potential traffic and parking problems, there was no entry. And as you also may recall, there was, that was a major issue down there, was the traffic pouring out of the alley, which is the only ingress egress access to the 37 parking stalls spilling out onto Highway 75. And there was a lot of issues with traffic squealing and tires peeling out of there, so. In conclusion, I just wanted to bring up, when the Liquor Commission denied the Rain's Lounge long form they brought up in their findings of facts, they said the commission considered the recommendation of the governing body.
Sir, we're here on this applicant, not on everyone.
Correct, but they said the nature of the neighborhood or community of the proposed license and the location of proposed license would require the use of additional law enforcement resources. I believe none of those issues have changed. That's it.
Next opponent, please.
I'm Mailey Mason, 9632 North 34th Street, representing the North Omaha Commercial Club. I do appreciate that Mr. English did meet with some of us, explaining what he wanted to do, but I don't know that we can believe him. He spent the whole three years that it was the Rain Lounge working there. He knows what was going on there. He is associated with Mr. Overton. And we went through over two years of trying to shut this bar down because, and Mr. Overton would over and over say he was going to change things and he never did. Mr. English says he's going to change things, but what kind of guarantee do we have? And with his association, I just, we're all very concerned. Also, he was cited for having people in during the COVID restrictions. He's had other citations. So we are very pro-business, but I'm very concerned about this establishment. The other thing is, I don't think it's so much the DJ, it's the number of people. So perhaps if it could be limited to how many people can come to this establishment, that would be helpful. But otherwise, we are recommending that this be turned down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Luis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. Mr. President, I hope I am not out of term, but I'm actually a proponent and I want to make one comment.
You're out of turn, so you have to sit down and one of us will have to call you up at that point. And I'll call you up, so don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other opponents? Okay, would you like a minute of rebuttal? So you have, what I've heard is Overton is still going to be involved or will be involved and there's going to be big crowds again. So what, if anything, will you be doing to limit crowd size or to ensure that Mr. Overton has nothing to do with this?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, for the record. And I'll let Sean answer a little bit of that. I want to just say, the big difference in this license is there'll be a condition on this license that will pull the license if he violates it. And believe me, the DJ entertainment, that is, that's what causes the crowds. This was the Three Cs for as long as I can, 30, 40 years. And he wants to go back to the exact, his dad worked there years ago. He's from the neighborhood. He wants to return it to the same type of operation it was before. I mean, if he puts that condition on it, that pretty well says it all. And he's going to operate a completely different type of establishment. That kind of says it all. The fact that he owes payments to a landlord or somebody else, I don't think is relevant, quite frankly. He did have a COVID violation back in May because he wrongfully thought he could serve some employees. And turns out, that was against the rules also. He didn't know that. Our Liquor Commission did not do anything with that. But I wanted to just answer those and then, Mr. English, tell, answer Mr. Jerom's question.
And a part of that is the name itself that you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem changing the name in the long run, whether it changes back to threes or some variation of the form. But I would want to take one step at a time and that's getting a liquor license. Signs are expensive, marketing's expensive. I want to make sure that I at least have the opportunity to operate a business in the neighborhood that I've lived in for 30-plus years, done a lot of business in the neighborhood and would like to continue to do business in the neighborhood. As Mr. Kelly said, I'm a full-time Realtor as well. And so my name obviously means something and I would not want to besmirch my name by, you know, doing anything that would hinder my ability to do business. Yeah, and I'll be. Yeah, and I'll be still in this, I live three minutes away. I'm, I'm there, you know, 35 hours a week anyway, and I have no problem being there anyway. Most of the bar business is later in the evening anyway, when I would not be out showing homes or doing, uh, my real estate activities.
You expect no traffic issues?
Yeah, uh, you know, while the, the, the club DJ and the promoters were very successful and did good at what their job was, was to bring a ton of people in, uh, to the establishment, I don't intend to utilize their services, um, at all, so I don't anticipate getting a crowd of any notable size, uh, like, like was previous.
Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
So, we're all familiar with this location. It's been a troubled location in my district for quite some time, as was noted, um, with the, under our previous owner and by the applicant. That there were substantial police calls here, plus police resources used at this location, there was a homicide, disturbances to the neighborhood, disturbances to surrounding businesses that were totally unacceptable over a long period of time. So, when this came back with a new applicant, uh, but with the same name and a lot of similarities to this previous establishment, I was highly skeptical of what we're gonna, what we're gonna hear today. And another red flag for me was that even after all this time and all those issues, nobody reached out to me as the council member for that area, or any other council member that, to my knowledge, on the Liquor Committee or otherwise. That raises a red flag for sure. To your credit, you did reach out to some neighbors, and they asked me, "Hey, should we, should we meet with this, uh, person?" And I said, "Yeah, you should. Let's engage him and see if there's something we can do in a positive fashion and see if it truly will be different." And I know the folks that are here today did do that, um, but obviously weren't convinced by that conversation that it will be different. I wanna refer to a communication and opposition, it's, that's in the record and on the agenda, to that effect as well, and, and have a few questions for you, Mr. English.
Sure.
Um, and I think you can tell by the approach of the neighbors, and it was the same with the previous establishment, too. They want it to be successful. That was the president of the North Omaha Community, or Commercial Club that just talked, whose job it is to make businesses in that area successful. And they did give it a chance, and they want, I feel like they want to give this one a chance, too, if they felt it would be different, but they just aren't convinced. So, I was gonna ask you about the name. To me, it's a total red flag and a mistake to keep the same name. I understand you just gave the answer that you think, uh, you wanna start out slow and maybe change it later, but that's a whole nother application and a whole nother process that I just don't see, I don't have confidence in that coming back around to us. And it concerns me that you wouldn't change that right away, if you truly were looking for a different establishment and a different business model. I guess you've already answered that question, so I'll, I'll move on, but I was, I was not convinced by the answer. You did address the violation of the designated health measure, um, that was there. That's concerning to me, too, as, as the manager of the establishment then, and obviously the owner going forward. That's problematic. Let's talk about the connection on the lease. So I had thought about going the route of, well, can we just establish some conditions or some restrictions that would be, um, better for the neighborhood, or give them some assurance, this will be different. But a key one in that whole prospect is, are you truly financially independent from Mr. Overton and previous management? And in my, in my estimation and conclusion is, you're not. We can't go that route because you're subleasing from him. Uh, and to me, that's inherent, inherent conflict and financial conflict of interest that we can't separate from in this instance. But I wanna give you a chance to answer that question about your lease and your sublease arrangement with the current owner, if you would address that, please.
Yeah, uh, I have met with the, the building owner, who, uh, is the, the lessor of the building. Um, also, obviously, I talked to Mr. Overton, and, uh, he has assigned the remainder of his lease, uh, which is about 18 months, um, left on that lease. Um, I plan to take over the remainder of that lease, followed by all the terms set forth in the original lease, uh, with Mr. Walker, who is, uh, the building owner, uh, and make payments, um, as set forth in the lease.
And that goes through 2022, as I understand it, right? And so you'd be paying, your payments would go to Mr. Overton?
No.
To Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And when did that arrangement start?
Well, it'll, it's conditioned upon, uh, approval of a liquor license. But we have a signed agreement, um, as of October, with the condition that I would assume that lease, uh, with the approval of a liquor license.
And is that amount, $1,750?
Yes.
That's the same amount for, for my councilmember's, um, knowledge, as the current arrangement with Mr. Overton. And this is not your issue, but I would, I would note, there is still a lot of back taxes though there as well, um, both the restaurant tax, and I'm pretty sure some state taxes, too. Again, not your issue, but, um, that certainly is an issue for, um, for the current leaseholder. So you were not operating anything there prior to today or during September?
No.
Because even though the liquor license was canceled by this council and canceled by the Liquor Commission, it was dragged out by the current owner, and they were operating there in September, I'm quite confident. And that was concerning to me, too, that not only were they not cooperative with anything we'd, we had done here, they fought tooth and nail, even when it was, when it was clear they needed to shut down. And again, I'm not gonna put that on you, but you weren't employed at the time, and that's concerning to me, too. The last thing I would say, or last few things I would say, and I see there's some other lights, too, is that I just don't see, you know, you know, we see so many applicants come here and say, "I'm gonna do a neighborhood bar, that's what I wanna do." That's what Mr. Overton said, too, on more than one occasion. I just don't see that working out here at this location. There was parking issues, there are site issues with neighboring glass company, uh, there was parking on the lawn, that's against city code. Those things haven't changed. And again, I just think the ties are way too close, that I can't in good conscience put the neighborhood through this risk again. There are more lights to come, but I'm gonna go ahead and motion to deny, which is just a recommendation to Liquor Commission, that's what we do as a city council, but that's my motion.
Mr. English, uh, can you, we have your name and address, please.
Yeah, Sean English, 11121 North Post Road, Omaha 68112.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was actually going back. I had raised, uh, the issue, um, I had some questions on the lease as well. I was trying to find that real quick from, I thought it was an attachment of an email I had sent out to the rest of the council, but I'll, I'll try to do this a little bit from memory, but, um, the, uh, the, the sublease agreement that you have with Mr. Overton and the, and the landlord or the property owner, I, I believe was executed, if I, if I remember right, or became effective, and it was dated September 1st of 2020, is that correct?
I'd have to look, but yeah, that's, uh.
So I guess, um, I, I just, I, I have a couple of questions. So I think Mr. Festerson asked, where, has this, has it business, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
If I couldn't.
Yeah.
There was an attempt originally, um, 'cause Mr. Overton did not appeal Liquor Commission's ruling, but he did, at that point, kinda throw up his hands and say, "Okay, I'll, if, if Mr. English wants it, I'll sell it to him." And we went to the commission to attempt to get a temporary operating permit and go ahead and keep the license afloat that way. They declined to do that. So that's why it started in September, and then we had to do a whole new application now. That's why it's dated back in September.
Thanks, thank you. So, um, which, so originally, my question was gonna, going to be, why would, uh, why would anyone enter into an agreement to, for sublease on, with, with a liquor license pending without having those approvals in place before you?
Well, they're, they're all subject, councilman, they're, they're subject to the granting of the license. They don't have any effect unless the license is issued.
All right, the, all right, the, uh, the sublease agreement I read did not have any subject to language in there. It was just a straight assignment of the, uh, of the lease. So I, too, because of that, I had some questions about the relationship between Mr. Overton and Mr. English then, and, and that being of concern. So I, I share that concern that Mr. Festerson voiced, um, on, on that issue. The other, um, I think there was, uh, are there any other, there was mentioned in that sublease agreement, too, that, um, I, I think it was in paragraph three, that mentioned that there were, there may be other written documents addressing the approval agreed to by all executed, the assignment and the assumption of lease, in the assignment and assumption of lease. Are there any other documents that address that?
If, there is a condition in the purchase agreement as far as.
I was gonna say, I believe we have a condition.
I don't have, I'm, I was talking about the sublease, not the purchase agreement. I'm talking about the sublease agreement.
But none of it kicks in if we don't get a liquor license. Bottom line.
All right, that was, that was not mentioned in, in the sublease.
And, and maybe it should have, should have been, but the overall agreement, all parties agree, that's, that's what we're doing.
Caused an issue or raised a question as to the, the arrangement, uh, between the, the tenant and the subtenant, but.
And I, and I may have inadvertently left that out. Look at me, not them. There, there is no arrangement with Mr. Overton in any way, shape, or form going forward. None.
All right.
Or I wouldn't be here.
Okay, and so there, and the, the, again, in that paragraph three, where it mentioned that there were, that it mentions that there may be other documents between the three parties, and you're saying the only other one is, is the pending purchase agreement?
Right, we just put that in as a clause in case we have something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, Mr. English, I, I think my biggest concern is that not changing the name. So, um, I had actually spoke to your attorney a little bit, um, about this previously, last week, at some point. But I guess I was under the assumption it was completely new owner, somebody else coming in, taking over, and I, and Mr. Kelly, that, I'm not putting that on you, it was what I was thinking. So when I saw that it still said Rain, that was my concern, because I was supportive of having a brand-new owner, brand-new bar, new name, let's try something completely different than what's been there, because also, it's not in the neighborhood's benefit to just have a building sit there empty and, and there's other issues that come along with that. So I'm always willing to give new business owners a chance, it's just here, I just don't see that this is a new business.
The sign, I mean, he wants to change the name. Signs are, I know from experience, extremely expensive. And we're in the middle of COVID, which is why I didn't contact all of the council, which I normally do. Uh, I did attempt to contact many of you. But because of that, um, you, you kinda gotta, kinda walk before you run, like the old joke. So, so, so that's what he's starting, he's, he is a fresh start to this business, and he worked at the prior business. So that's what he wants to return it to. So no, he's not brand-new to the, he has worked there, but.
Right.
He was not part of the management of the other corporation.
Well, and I'm just not sure, I mean, for me, if I wanted to come in and, and, and do this bar, and I wanna say, I, you know, I wanna do something completely different, but if the same sign is up, and the same patrons continue to come back, and the same patrons that were parking in the yard and were being loud, and there were arguments outside residents, I mean, all the complaints that we've heard over and over and over from people that live around it, how is Mr. English going to control that?
I, I guess I've been in the bar business too long. I know that the sign doesn't totally matter. Uh, I've saw several bars in this city operate very successfully without a sign. So that never was a red flag to me, because we talked about the fact that he wanted to change it, but he didn't have the money to do a first-class sign. The signs are, can be forty, fifty thousand dollars or more. So, um, if that needs to be a condition to do it, we'll do it. But to do it first class, which is what he wants to do, you, you gotta kinda start slow and build up.
Well, and I get that, but what I'm saying is by not changing the name, keeping the name the same, I don't think, you're not gonna be able to change the, to change the people that are coming and the people that were shooting and, and arguing and everything.
When you change, having no music, no nightclub activity, changes the very nature of the building and word is on the street immediately. And you don't have that problem. That, at least in my experience, that's not an issue.
Well, what are you gonna do if, if that's not the case? If the night you open, the same crowds that all the neighbors had problems with, who were outside literally arguing and urinating and there's gunshots, and what are you gonna do? I mean, what are you gonna do if the, if all of a sudden you reopen and you have the exact same problems that were there, um, previously, which is why the liquor license was canceled?
I, I know we're, we're talking hypothetical, um, but without the promotion and without the club atmosphere, uh, I am very, very confident that those crowds won't come. Uh, 95% of the week or more, we operated as a neighborhood bar prior to the, the four hours on every Saturday, where it was, you know, went from, you know, 25 miles per hour to 100.
But I, but I actually recall Taco Tuesday being mentioned. Am I wrong, I'm not confusing, wasn't it, there was Taco Tuesday as one of the nights? So a regular Tuesday night, there were issues at, at.
Right, and we want, like I said, again, and on those Taco Tuesday nights, we had, it was again a club atmosphere. It wasn't always busy, uh, but I will not have.
No, the problem is, is it would get busy about 11:00 PM.
Right.
When all the neighbors are going to bed and trying to put their families to bed. The bar got busy at 11:00, and then kinda stayed busy till we had up to 3:00 in the morning. I mean, because it was even after it closed, people stayed in the parking lot, in the streets around it. So it, it's not like people.
Right, I won't be, I won't be promoting any of those, um, type of nights. If I feel that it is getting, the parking lot becomes full, uh, then I have no problem in shutting the parking lot down and shutting, shutting the door off and, um, turning people, people away. But again, I don't plan on promoting any nights similar to that, uh, whether it's a Taco Tuesday type of night or a, a busy, a busy Saturday.
I understand that you're not planning to promote it, so, but my question is, without your promotion, and I don't think that this is a hypothetical, because I'm saying that this is what may happen in the first week that you're open. Word gets out, Rain Lounge is reopened. Okay? Word gets out, somebody posted on their Instagram or whatever young people use now. "Let's all meet at Rain Lounge." And all of a sudden, you've got this problem. What are you going to do if, when you see people parking at the business across the street, the glass business? I mean, what, what are you going to do in that event?
If that, if that is the case, then I would engage, uh, the security detail to, uh, explain to them, you know, what the new, uh, format is of the bar and where they can and can't be, and, you know, if they can be respectful, then, uh, you know, I turn it over to, uh, other resources. But again, there, if, if that, if that happens, which I, I don't believe that it, that it will without the, without the promotion and the club atmosphere, um, then I will handle it, uh, you know, with the security.
How much security are you gonna have?
Uh, again, it would depend on the night, but I could have anywhere from three to seven security, you know, security guards if need be.
Yeah, but let me, if I, if I might, we're really talking about total hypothetical. It's not ever gonna happen, because he doesn't need security.
These aren't hypotheticals, because this council has seen, they, it actually occurred for.
But, but, Council lady, let me, let me just gently say to you, I think we're talking apples and oranges. When you take away the nightclub, I mean, I've done this my whole life. When you take away the incentive for that certain, certain type of crowd to show up, they don't come. I mean, there's nothing for them to do there. They come for a certain genre, and if that's not there, they don't come. Ask, I, I could tell you, hundreds of bars have closed in the city over the years, because they changed genres and it didn't work out. People don't come. His, having a parking problem is something he would love to have. That's not, that's, we're not talking about something that's remotely possible, in my view. I mean, I, I guess hypothetically, anything's possible, but I would just really implore you to understand, that's not gonna happen. It didn't happen for 40 years before. He worked there before, he's gonna have the same type of operation. They didn't have it then, why would they have it now? Just because the name hasn't changed, it, it goes in the second. Now, again, his plan is to change the name, but you have to sell some drinks first, you know, you gotta pay for it. And you don't wanna just put up a cardboard sign, you wanna do it with, you know, with some dignity and class.
And I, my next question would be for Mr. Renan Bosch, uh, or I guess Ryan Weason, who's way in the back. Ryan, I'll talk as you're walking down, if you can hear me. What are our options? Can we, and I talked to President Jerem about this before, a little bit. Can we have a probation period? Unlike other, can we do some kind of probation to ensure? Unlike other, can we do some kind of probation to ensure that this isn't going to be the same kind of establishment?
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. It is possible for the commission to issue liquor licenses with certain conditions attached to it. Some of those conditions in the past have been that certain individuals have no involvement in the operation or management of a liquor license. I know in the past that the council has indicated that it would put certain establishments on something like a probation. Generally, that probation has meant some sort of informal arrangement with the City Council Law Committee, who then, if they felt violated some of the terms of that city probation, would then take actions such as a long-form application, or other action, maybe requesting the Liquor Control Commission to take specific action. I know that I have seen the Liquor Control Commission put conditions on licenses, saying that we're gonna issue this license, but if you have any violations within six months or a year, that you're gonna get called back in, or the license may be subject to termination. That may be a type of probation, for lack of a better term.
And I guess, so my question to you would be, if I wanted to make, what would be the proper motion in order to do that? So, can we do an informal probation? And Mr. Kelly, would your client be willing to do that, so that instead of arguing about hypotheticals, why don't we just do a six-month probation and see if it happens?
I think, and Mr. Kelly can respond when I'm finished, that maybe the appropriate motion might be a motion to approve, subject to certain conditions, one of those conditions being the type of probation that you're envisioning, among other conditions if the council so desired.
Thank you.
And if I could just be Mr. Weeson's assistant for a second, I would also add that we would intend to put these conditions at the Liquor Control Commission. We have no problem with that, and I'm sure the commission will abide by that, they always have in the past. And then, if he would violate the condition, that would just take a show cause at the next meeting, and cancellation could happen right there.
And that would make me...
You wouldn't even have to do it, because the commission will have done it. You also have your own powers, you can do. But, and we are agreed to any of the type of conditions you're thinking of, because we know what kind of operation's gonna be there.
Thank you. And I think that would be what I would be looking to do, would be motion to approve it with conditions, and I would like to recommend to the Liquor Commission that they put those conditions into the liquor...
And for the record, we acquiesce to that. We agree to that.
Madam Clerk, the question procedurally from Councilmember Harding is, is what time remains in our allotted City Council review before forwarding a recommendation for approval or denial?
The license is due, or recommendation is due on November 13th, so it could be laid over to the...
Could be laid over, to accomplish, if that's what you're thinking. Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as Chair of the Law or Liquor Committee, of all of the groups, all the bars that have come in front of us, is because of music. That's exactly the problem is, because it draws people in, it's the music. So, that's why I'm gonna ask you, do you plan to have music?
Other than a jukebox, I don't plan to have any type of DJ music, with the exception of potentially karaoke.
Because, in all the cases that have come in front of us, is because they get DJs there, and it brings in people, and they will go there because they will like that particular type of music. You're assuring me that that's not part of your agenda?
Correct. I have no plans to bring in any outside DJ, outside music at all.
Good. So, I am to assume in the past, the music caused large crowds, people stayed afterwards, and they did uncomfortable things on people's yards, their tires, and all that. Would you say a lot of that had to do with the music that was being played at that particular location?
Well, I don't wanna speak to the type of the music, but yes, the DJ and promotion would bring large crowds in, which is their job, so I'm not gonna knock them for the job that they did, but it's not the type of establishment that I will be running.
Okay, so in the past, would you call, it was sort of like a club, and you wanna go back to a bar?
Correct.
There's a difference.
Correct.
And you're familiar with the way that bar at one time was?
Oh, yes. I'm a Florence resident, have been pretty much all my life. My dad was, were employed to a certain degree at the Three's Lounge, was what it was, prior to Rain Ultra Lounge, and it had been Three's Lounge for thirty-plus years, in addition to another bar name that it was prior to that.
Okay, so this is, I'm trying to, how I'm forming my opinion on this, you're what I call a local, because you live there.
Correct.
People know you in the neighborhood, I'm assuming.
Correct.
And you have a profession other than owning a bar, and what is that again?
Real estate.
So, you have something lose if your name gets in the paper?
Exactly.
So, probably wouldn't wanna buy a house or a business from you, if I heard that you were causing issues in the Florence community. It's a neat little community, and I can see why they wanted to keep it the way it is. But to me, it sounds like you wanna go back, sort of the retro in many ways.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's the suggestion of the Chair, that there'd be a motion to layover to allow the applicant time to meet with Mr. Weeson. Mr. Weeson has demonstrated in this past his ability to structure conditions in writing, and we have time to do that, it could come back on the 10th, but that's just my suggestion. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I'll second that.
To the 10th?
Yeah, to November 10th. In addition to, Mr. President...
Yes, you're recognized.
Okay, so in addition to what you just said about getting together, Mr. Weeson, I was gonna make a kind of off-cuff comment, that maybe on a name change for the bar, it could be Footloose, and I want you to figure out that A's movie's reference, but I would say that, you know, I think we did, at one time, someone remind me or correct me, make an amendment as to a name change for an establishment, I think it was Candy's. I think we amended the name for that, so I would be, I think, in this, if this layover is granted, or approved, I would seriously consider a name change. I know signs are expensive. It appears you're, by the purchase agreement, you're, you have ten thousand dollars to purchase the, and I'm not sure if you're purchasing the name, or the inventory, or what's included in that purchase agreement, but you have a ten thousand dollar purchase agreement, you have a seventeen hundred dollar a month lease commitment. I've heard you talk about the security, so you have all the overhead that goes along with that. I begin to be a little concerned about going into a business undercapitalized, but if you have, I don't know what the financials that you're bringing to the table on this, but if you do have the wherewithal and you wanna pursue this, I would highly recommend a name change, and that would probably be one of the amendments I'd like to see happen, or one of the requirements to go to the Liquor Commission from this council, is our recommendation. So, I'll be supportive of the layover, and hope that between now and November 10th, some of those things can be accomplished.
Yes, and I think you're hearing, no Mr. Overton, no name, Rain, no promoters, no DJs, traffic control. But Mr. Festerson, I see your lights come on. You're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I've been told I'm high on the skeptical scale in general, that's probably true, and calling me high on the skeptical scale on this one, too. I think it is getting laid over, and so I'm willing to have that conversation, and it should include the residents that are here today, and their thoughts and opinions on what those conditions might be. But I was gonna go through a few things, as Mr. Jerem started to there, that would need to be in there for me to even consider this when it comes back. And it is the no DJ thing you've already agreed to. It is no connections to Mr. Overton. I'm not sure how we really structure that, given the lease arrangement, but that's for, maybe Mr. Weeson can help figure that out. No promotions. I think we should be discussing occupancy limitations. If it's truly not your intention to have five hundred people there at three in the morning, let's go ahead and do that. I don't know if that's seventy-five percent, or what that needs to be, but let's make it official. And let's acquire that name change. That makes no sense to start that organization back up the way it was, or to even have that implication. And I like that idea of the probationary period for six months, but I can also tell you that once somebody is granted a license, it's really hard, and there's a lot of process to go through to address any kind of issues. I know the neighbors feel that way, and have just experienced that for two years, and that's why I'm so concerned about this. I'll stop there. I think there's been a motion and a second, and we'll take it from there.
Yes, there's a motion and a second, with the condition the applicant meet with Mr. Weeson, who will involve the neighbors who testified in opposition today, and come back to the council on November 10 with proposed written restrictions. Madam Clerk.
And to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
And for the opponents who came today, Mr. Weeson's been asked to get your contact information, so before you leave, Ms. Mason, can make sure Mr. Weeson has your information, and you too. Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items fourteen through eighteen were held on October 20, 2020. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items nineteen through twenty-seven are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come up to the microphone at this time, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, in ordinance authorizing and directing issuance of various purpose and refunding bonds, tax-exempt series 2020A, and various purpose and refunding bonds, taxable series 2020B, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two million, five hundred thousand dollars. A is amendment of the whole requested by the Finance Department.
Is there a motion on the amendment of the whole?
Move to approve all the amendments.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, in ordinance to amend sections of Chapter Thirty-Six of the Omaha Municipal Code for Business Access and Transit Lanes.
Public hearing on item twenty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six, Burt Street. I'm a proponent. I am taking the bus again. I started doing that recently, like, a week ago, and I'm just eager for more routes, more buses, and as it pertains to transit-oriented development, I think this is part of a holistic, you know, development for busing in the city. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents on number twenty-nine? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty, in ordinance to approve...
Councilmember Festerson, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There was a delay on your light.
Yeah. We had a brief conversation about this this morning, and I just wanted to have it for the record today, too. Mr. Stube, I think you're here from Public Works, if you don't mind coming down. I'm supportive of this as well, and I think it's, it, of course, is preparing for the start of what will be our Orbit Bus System throughout the city, which I think is very positive. So, there are some technical changes in here that just make it allowable for a bus that size to actually operate on our streets, but there is something of substance here that I wanted to just walk through with you, as it applies to bus lanes. It is, it can, I think it envisions that bus lanes will be largely occupied by these buses and not cars, and therefore, this would adopt into code that only cars in those lanes, they should only be there if they plan to be turning right. And there is actually an enforcement mechanism here, a ticketing operation, or a ticketing mechanism that could be used in such situations, but I think it's much more about just trying to encourage smooth bus travel. Pretty unlikely there'll be anybody out there enforcing cars in or outside of this lane, and I think, in fact, most people will choose to not be in that lane, because they would probably prefer not to be behind a bus. Is that an accurate assessment of what this will do?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, yes, you are correct. I mean, obviously, we're looking at routes that have multiple lanes of traffic, so if you are an individual in a car traveling, and you don't need to make that right-turn movement, the intent would be is that you can move over to the other lanes that'll allow you to, for through traffic. There's no question that the intent would be is if you want a bus rapid transit to be successful, the intent would be to try to allow that bus to operate in that lane by itself.
So, it's much more about encouraging bus transit and expedient travel with public transit than any kind of enforcement mechanism or limiting other cars, right?
Correct. We've worked with Metro on this project since day one. We've supported them wholeheartedly in trying to make this successful. There's other things that we've implemented from the standpoint of preemption at the traffic signals, as another way to allow the buses to be able to proceed, so that we can obviously have more ridership on that type of rapid transit.
And it's our intent and belief this will actually help with traffic flow...
That is correct.
...because of public transit, and also alternative transit, and alternative ways for cars to get around.
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item thirty, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Sterling Ridge, located southeast of One Hundred and Thirty-Second and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item thirty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kellen Hydeman, two-one-one-one, South Sixty-seventh Street, Suite Two Hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-six. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and just here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-one, in ordinance to transfer property at the corner of Thirty-Sixth Street and Wright Street.
The public hearing on item thirty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-two, in ordinance approving a bid award to BJ's Fleetwash LLC in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars to provide custodial services at various recreational facilities.
The public hearing on item thirty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-three, in ordinance to amend section twenty-three dash one-seven-seven of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification for a mental health crisis coresponder team lead, and a mental health crisis coresponder personnel board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item thirty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, my name is Lindsay Kroll, I'm the Mental Health Coordinator with the Omaha Police Department, five-zero-five, South Fifteenth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-two. I'm a proponent for moving these positions under city employment. Currently, the corresponders are working and embedded in the Omaha Police Department as part of the Behavioral Health and Wellness Unit. Transitioning these positions to city employment will assist in the sustainability of the program, and assist us in retention and recruitment, and is consistent with other models around the country. The Omaha Police Department is committed to providing those in the community experiencing mental illness and mental health crises with the right intervention at the right time, connecting them to resources, and in turn diverting from emergency protective custody placements, unnecessary hospitalizations, and incarcerations when appropriate. This will in turn save taxpayer dollars, decrease further traumatic experiences for individuals in those crisis situations. Currently, the corrisponder program is privately funded, but will fully transition to the City of Omaha in 2022. I'm here with Officer Lee Culver with the Behavioral Health and Wellness Unit, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm very supportive of this, and very supportive of what you're doing in the Police Department and with this Behavioral Health Unit. Just a couple of follow-up questions for you, Ms. Kroll. So, the Behavioral Health Foundation will support this through 2022, so what we're doing here is just establishing the personnel... So what we're doing here is just establishing the personnel positions to begin that process of hiring these folks into city employment, right?
That's correct. They are, their positions currently filled, contracted through Lutheran Family Services. We will be transitioning the currently filled positions over to the city and then hiring the remainder of the open positions.
And we also in 2021 have some dedicated police departments, sworn police department staff to this program, too, right?
Correct. They were reallocated to the unit, to the Behavioral Health and Wellness Unit.
And that's a sergeant, is that correct?
Yep. Sergeant Jason Heft and Officer Lee Culver, who's with me today.
Okay, great. Thank you, Officer. And so then you would have five new employees in 2022? Is that accurate to say?
Correct.
One per precinct?
Yep.
And are they all coresponders or there's a lead position in here, too, right?
Correct, yeah. We wanted to identify one position as more of a team lead role, just the sheer volume of mental health-related calls and the work that they're doing. It would be nice to have an identified point person that they could contact at any given notice to consult and kind of get guidance as needed as well, so more of a lead.
Great. So then overall, if the Behavioral Health Unit would have, I guess, seven employees?
There would be five coresponders, myself as the mental health coordinator, and Sergeant Heft and Officer Lee Culver in total.
Great. And I would point out, too, because there has been some discussion about this, that these folks would be becoming city employees, but they would not be sworn personnel. They would be considered civilian employees, right?
That's correct.
Part of the SIM tech again.
Yep.
I think that's positive, too. Well, I look forward to voting for this in two weeks, I guess, getting this going. I know it has done great things already. Could you give us a sense of your call volume recently or any particular timeframe that would be pertinent?
Sure. I just ran some third quarter numbers for our coresponders. So there's two currently full-time coresponders in these positions. In the third quarter of this year, they've responded to 236 calls for service. Of those, only 23 of them resulted in emergency protective custody placement. So they're looking at about a 90% diversion rate when they go on scene with officers. Those individuals are not being involuntarily placed in the hospital. As far as mental health calls for service, we are working on improving tracking of that as a department. As a whole, we're looking at around 3,200 mental health-related calls that we are documenting at this point in time, but we know that there are more than that.
Fairly new and I'm sure turning up, right?
Exactly.
A huge need right now. It's probably, see, this is one component of an overall strategy that we need to be working on, but an important one. So thanks for your work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mister President. This one, for me as well, is important, but I wanted to ask you about, logistically, if you're gonna have five coresponders, obviously per precinct, how do you intend to work out the hours with only one person in a 24-hour day?
It's a great question. So with our tracking of the mental health calls for service, we are looking at the high call volume times and locations and what to staff to that. The Omaha Police Department does have access to a 24/7 mobile crisis response team that is funded through Region 6, available to all law enforcement entities in the region through Lutheran Family Services. So if there is a call that has a mental health component outside of the working hours of the coresponder, they, officers do have access to that service as well.
So a part of that bargaining unit, they would be called in on overtime if there was something after their normal scheduled day?
This would be a separate contracted service that is not associated with the coresponder program.
So it would be additional to the five employees we would be adding?
It would be additional, but nothing that the city would be responsible for. It's a region-funded service contracted through Lutheran Family Services that provides that, that the Omaha Police Department also has access to if needed.
Okay, same sort of training?
Very similar.
For the after-hours employees?
Yes.
Okay. How many employees do you currently have?
There are three coresponders currently.
What precincts are they assigned to?
There's one at southeast, southwest, and northwest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item, item 34, an ordinance to accept the bid at Payless Office Products, Inc., to provide janitorial supplies for the Omaha Fire Department at a total cost of $27,789.64.
The public hearing on item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Store. Opponents on the last item. Come on down.
I need to protest that, huh?
Well, no need to protest, just come on down.
Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, at least for now. Item number 33. I did a little homework over the years. The more I read that and think about it, I'm thinking, here's government now taking on part of the role of a police officer, in writing with a police officer or a sheriff's deputy, and maybe saying to that deputy, oh, that guy's mentally ill. He's flying his flag upside down. He's got a problem. We've got a mental health crisis. But who really decides that? How many of these coresponders are we going to have on each shift? And simply because I have a conservative sign in my yard, will the liberal side say, oh, he's got a problem, call 911 and have a coresponder come out with the sheriff or with the police officer? But I do think the chief told us a while back that that would not happen until they knew the situation was safe. But does that not take a while to decide? Can we decide at a spur of a moment that somebody is a mental health crisis? Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 34, an ordinance to accept the bid at Payless Office Products, Inc., to provide janitorial supplies for the Omaha Fire Department at a total cost of $27,789.64.
The public hearing on item 34 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 35, an ordinance to enter into a seven-month purchase agreement with Galls LLC for Omaha Police Department standard uniform items.
The public hearing on item 35 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 36, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $110,471 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2019 Stop Violence Against Women Grant Award.
The public hearing on item 36 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 37, an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase agreement with the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation for the Riverfront Revitalization Area and for computer equipment for various city departments in the amount of $15,500,000 lease revenue bond series 2020B.
The public hearing on item 37 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 38, an ordinance to amend Chapter 12, Article 3, entitled Prevention of COVID-19 to Extend the Sunset Provision. A is communications in opposition. B is medical and scientific data. C is an amendment of the whole requested by Councilmember Gray.
The public hearing on item 38 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Oh, we have sign-in sheets. Dr. Poor, Adi Poor, you're recognized. If you would like to testify on either side of this issue, there are sign-in sheets available outside the doors of the chamber. You'll need to sign in. Dr. Poor, welcome.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Adi Poor, Douglas County Health Department, 1111 South 41st Street. For six weeks after the mandate was put in place on August 15th, the cases were lower than before the mandate. However, starting the week of October 3rd and the three weeks since then, we have seen some sharp increases in cases. Although we have seen some more testing, this cannot explain the number of increased cases. The positivity rate in Omaha is 17% at this time, and it was 10.2% at that time. The seven-day rolling average was 22 cases per 100,000, and it's now 44 cases per 100,000. Hospitalizations have increased significantly in the last two to three weeks. Data supplied by the local hospitals indicate that there were 102 COVID cases in the hospital on August 15, and now as of today, it's 191. And of those, 74 are in the ICU units. This concern has been voiced by our healthcare providers, but also by the governor, who has put aside $40 million for the hospitals to actually augment their workforce. This all speaks to why it is necessary at this time to extend the mask mandate and make sure that all the MPI's measures are being used and followed in our community. I'd like to address three issues, three questions. Why are our cases increasing even though we do have a mask mandate? It's most likely a combination of factors. Not everyone is wearing masks when they cannot social distance. Masks and social distancing is often not observed when small groups or larger families are getting together. On 9/21, September 21, most of the state went into phase four, which meant most of the restrictions under the DHM were lifted. Capacity indoor was increased from 50% to 75%, and there were no more limits on capacity at outdoor events, in gyms, bars, restaurants, just to mention a few. School and colleges opened. Labor Day was on September 7. It may sometimes take up to four weeks until we see a spike in the community. The more people that are infected, the more exposure in the community, which can lead to logarithmic increases. Are masks effective? Yes. Consensus guidelines say that wearing a cloth face covering and social distancing slows COVID-19. An article in The Lancet reported again, "Social Distancing Reduces the Risk of Transmission by 90% and Mask Wearing by 65%." Also obvious, but worth noting, is that if we wear masks, we reduce healthcare costs, we reduce the exposure and infections requiring quarantine and isolation resulting in missing schools and missing work, we reduce the sometimes debilitating long-term effects from COVID, we make hospital services available for those without COVID, and we enable the economy to rebound soundly and more quickly. And third, why should we extend the mask mandate? The next three months in Omaha will bring people inside, where the virus is more likely to infect individuals, where social distancing is more difficult to achieve regularly. In addition, we are going into flu season, where coronaviruses are more likely to circulate. Therefore, let's take all the precautions we can, and my recommendation is to keep the mask mandate in place until the end of the year or until certain thresholds are achieved. At that time, we can reevaluate, since we have a better understanding if a vaccine is available, especially for the vulnerable population, and if we have the transmission in our community better under control, where we can identify, trace, and isolate quickly. In summary, we do not have to choose between a total shutdown of society or letting the virus run unchecked through the population. We can instead rely on science and the spirit of helping each other, protecting each other and getting through this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent is Dr. Ali Khan.
Ali Khan, 4400 Emily Street. I work at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, but I do not represent the University of Nebraska Medical Center.
And I have 984-355 as your address.
That's also the correct address, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how to make sure you see all of this.
On top. There you go. You have to slide the microphone over, too.
Because expertise matters. I have 29 years of experience responding to infectious disease outbreaks worldwide. I thought I would start by showing you what came across my screen an hour and a half ago as I left work to come here to the council meeting. Emergency room overcrowded, PACU full. As a scientist, I am very capable of laying out all the datas that shows that masks works. 50% reduction at a community level. We know masks work just like seat belts work, like car seats work, and we also know that it works for healthcare workers. However, I will leave that science to my colleagues. Instead, what I'm not good as a scientist is dealing with disinformation. So if I may please, I'd like to talk about how some of the pieces of disinformation about COVID and masks, and then move to your policy decision. So those are my two items for today. Disinformation, item number one, nobody dies from COVID. They just die of COVID. There have been 300,000 deaths from COVID in the United States if you look at excess deaths. Excess deaths means these people would not have died if it was not for COVID. And we have lots of modeling data that can prove that. This is now the third-leading cause of death in the U.S., where in 10 months, an unknown disease is the third-leading cause of death in the U.S. We still kill 700 people a day in the U.S. from this disease, and unless we get this under check, this may well be the second-leading cause of death in the U.S. this year. The second piece of disinformation, which is, we don't need to do anything about this disease, let's just infect everybody and get herd immunity. That is the most unethical, disastrous, and racist approach I've ever heard to responding to a pandemic. This, we are currently using, what some of you may have heard, the Barrington Declaration. This is the official U.S. strategy in the U.S. as outlined by White House people, including Dr. Scott Atlas, who is the senior advisor to the U.S. So what you see here, the stair-step outbreak, is the Barrington Declaration in action. Infect everybody in America while protecting the elderly. Now, if you infect everybody in America, that is the maximum death strategy. Unfortunately, it's a maximum death strategy for minority populations in America. So African-Americans, Hispanics, and Native Americans disproportionately die from this disease. The third piece of disinformation you will hear is Sweden. I love when people mention Sweden to me. So let me show you the cumulative data deaths for Sweden. Sweden had five to 10 times the number of deaths as Denmark and Norway, and they had a greater decline in GDP than the rest of the world. If I may end with our policy decision. Lots of countries, this is an example of 13 different countries, different geography, different political systems that have decided to get their disease under control. So this is a policy decision if we have disease under control or not. And my final slide for the council is, this is about choices. You have the full slide in front of you. So there are three paths available to you. One is do what we're doing, which is the middle line for number of deaths in the state. One is don't do nothing at all. That's the red line for number of deaths. And the green line is enforce a good mask mandate in the United States. The green line, the lower line, will lead to the least number of people of color dying in this state. Thank you, sir.
James Lawler, 984-355 Nebraska Medical Center. Next up is John Lowe.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Dr. James Lawler. I am also from University of Nebraska Medical Center, and I also do not speak officially for the university. Just wanted to share a couple of pieces of information for everyone. We've seen scientific evidence of the fact that face masks work to prevent shedding and transmission of the virus. I think what we're now getting is practical evidence and information about the utility of face masks. So this comes from a very recent study that was run by Carnegie Mellon University, doing a survey of persons and assessing their frequency of face mask use and then correlating that with the number of people they know with COVID symptoms. And if I can zoom in here to this, the white button, this one. Oh, we're trying. There we go. What you can see here on this graph is a very strong correlation between places where face mask use is common and where people with COVID-19 symptoms are rare. So down- So down here in this corner versus the diagonal line that then moves up to places where face mask use is much less common and where symptoms of COVID-19 are much more frequently seen. This is a very strong correlation between those two factors, and I think gives good practical evidence that in communities where face mask use is prevalent, disease is less commonly seen. This is also confirmed by a very recent study that was done by an economist out of University of Kansas that looked at Kansas counties that implemented face mask mandates versus those that didn't. And you can see fourteen days after face mask mandates were implemented in these counties, their COVID case counts leveled off and stayed consistently low, while counties that did not implement a face mask mandate, their case counts continued to grow. And finally, I'll point to this survey that was just recently released by National Geographic. Many people like to point to ideology or politics related to face mask use and try to make it a partisan issue, and it really is not. The vast majority of Americans in this survey were in favor of face mask use and regularly used face masks, including those who identified themselves as Republicans or Democrats, conservatives or liberals. And you can see that among all of these demographics, ninety percent or more essentially used face masks. Now, you can't get ninety percent of Americans to agree on anything, but people understand the utility of face masks. They understand that using face masks are safe. I have many colleagues who work in the operating room, eight to ten hours a day, seven days a week or longer, and have been wearing face masks in that environment for twenty or thirty years, and they have not suffered ill health effects, they have not suffered decrement of their intelligence. Face masks are safe. We use them in medicine and healthcare all the time, and we know that they're effective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Lo, nine eight four three five five Nebraska Medical Center. Carrie Neiman, Douglas County Health Department, one 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 South Forty-first Street. You're next.
Dr. Lawler, if you'd provide the clerk with the copies, they'll make one a part
of the record and distribute. Thank you, Councilmember Harding.
Thank you much. Dr. John Lo, nine eight four three five five from Nebraska Medical Center. I do not speak on behalf of my employer, the University of Nebraska Medical Center. Provided you handouts. You know, I listened to your first city council meeting on the mask mandate and was really struck by that none of you signed up to implement public health measures, that this was kind of thrust upon you by the circumstances. So I wanted to just highlight that the strategy for combating the coronavirus is multi-factor, and that masks, a piece that you own, is one of the key factors there. As others have already highlighted, we have known interventions that work, and they work as layers. No single intervention is a silver bullet. As you'll note on that middle slice of cheese there, where there's a nice little red mouse depicted, which represents disinformation, and as public distrust of these interventions grows, they become less effective. So I just want to highlight that my mask protects you, your mask protects me, and this is why we're here advocating this. This is a slide from a National Academy of Science meeting that we convened a few months ago depicting how respiratory droplets related to SARS coronavirus spread from person to person, and the effect that having a face covering on has in blocking or capturing sixty percent, up to sixty percent of those droplets, which reduce the potential of infection or may reduce the seriousness of infection. As Dr. Poor already highlighted, we have seen a precipitous rise in cases and hospitalizations throughout our county. What I've highlighted here, I'll try to do as good a job as the other speakers is zooming. What you'll see is that highlighted there, when the mask ordinance went into effect, you see a few weeks later, we had a drop in cases and a clear trend of continuing decline. But then a few weeks later, we implemented phase four of the directed health measures, almost a complete reopening of daily life, and we see a pretty marked increase. And as you're all aware, the governor implemented a few moderate interventions shortly thereafter to combat that. So does community masking work? It does. This is one of the better exquisite studies out of Germany, where they had different communities with very similar demographics, healthcare infrastructure, public health infrastructure, and they show a decline when implementing community masking strategies in case increase rates. They even went so far as to show a decline in just from the date of announcement of a pending mask ordinance. Important to note that masks were a key cornerstone of the Major League Baseball approach that allowed us to complete an entire season of baseball and have, you know, all the way to the World Series. I end that with one thing. Coronavirus is real. It's having a real impact on Nebraska. Today, we have had a hundred and sixteen nursing homes in our state in the last twelve weeks that have had outbreaks. We have two hundred and thirteen residents in the last two weeks across Nebraska that have been diagnosed with COVID. We need to protect our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Neiman?
Douglas County Health Department, one 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 South Forty-first Street, Omaha.
Hi, Dr. Carrie Neiman. Assistant Professor of Adult and Pediatric Infectious Disease at UNMC and Children's Hospital Medical Center and a medical advisor to Douglas County Health Department. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding the importance of the mask mandate. As you've heard, our rates are going up. The positive test rate in Douglas County is currently as high as what was seen in New York City at the beginning of the pandemic. We have had two hundred and twenty-one deaths in Douglas County and six hundred and three deaths in Nebraska to date. Nationally, we are at eight point six million cases and more than two hundred and twenty thousand deaths. To compare, the total deaths in Nebraska from influenza last year was forty-four. This virus is many times more deadly than the flu. Now is not the time when we should be discussing removing the mask mandate. Omaha Public Schools has now returned to in-person learning. Our local schools have been doing a stellar job of developing COVID-19 plans to keep their students safe. We know that children do best with in-person learning and that they unfortunately were home way too long. Despite large groups of children now and in close spaces, we have had little in-school transmission of this virus. Several rural districts around the state, who initially did not mandate masks, quickly realized that the best ways to keep kids in school without repeated episodes of quarantine was to have continuous mask compliance and to have since enacted these measures. The kids are prepared to wear masks because it gives them the opportunity to return to the classroom. COVID-19 is not just a disease that affects the elderly, it also affects our children. Over the last several weeks, we're identifying increasing numbers of positive cases of acute COVID-19 infection, and our hospital admissions are increasing as well. About one month following our peak in April, we saw a spike of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. This is a severe post-infectious inflammatory syndrome that affects multiple organ systems in children. They present with high fevers, abdominal pain, and oftentimes their hearts are not working very well. This syndrome often requires high level of inpatient care, can result in long-term health implications, or even death. Half of our patients have required admission to the ICU, some have been placed on ventilators, and two have required bypass support. We are starting to see increased admissions once again for this syndrome. We cannot predict which child will develop this syndrome. Most often, they've had no or mild illness during their acute infection with the virus. When contract tracing is completed, these children are getting infected outside of the school environment. How can we, as the adults of the community, not role model a simple behavior that keeps our kids safe and allows them to stay in school? Upwards of forty to forty-five percent of infected individuals will be asymptomatic after they inquire this infection, which means we cannot rely on symptoms to guide when an individual should be wearing a mask or isolating from the rest of the community. Currently, those aged twenty to thirty-four represent the largest number of cases, followed by thirty-four to forty-four and zero to nineteen years of age. By age alone, these groups are less likely to develop severe disease as they have decreased comorbidities compared to older adults. Individuals in these ranges are also often parents to children. We are now heading into the holiday months where traditionally, families, young children, parents, grandparents will gather around to celebrate Thanksgiving and Christmas. Families will need to think carefully this year if they want to continue these traditions, especially those individuals who are not adhering to these protective health measures. While the virus may cause minimal symptoms in the returning college student, it could be deadly to an elderly relative, and that would be a large burden to bear. While COVID-19 is the most pressing respiratory virus illness we are currently deal with, we have a number of other viruses that we have to deal with this winter, including influenza, RSV, and parainfluenza. Further outside congregation of people will be limited as winter approaches, and we need to move events indoors where the ventilation will be limited and transmission increases. Our healthcare system will be tested this winter as we deal with the large burden of COVID-19 infection. This year, more than ever, we need to prevent the spread of these respiratory viruses to conserve our healthcare resources. The masks that we wear to protect others and ourselves from this virus will also protect us from these other viruses. Without community-wide mask adherence, we will not be able to drive down our positive rates. If we want to improve the health of our community while keeping our economy open, this is imperative. We do not yet have a perfect drug to treat this infection. Remdesivir was recently approved by the FDA as an approved drug, but results of trials show that it may shorten symptom duration but has little effect on mortality. While we are all hopeful that we will have a vaccine soon, hopefully by the end of November, this then needs to be deployed and administered to larger populations with the most vulnerable receiving vaccination first, then frontline workers, then those with high-risk conditions, and finally, the population at large. Pediatric studies have barely begun. COVID-19 is not going anywhere in the near future. I know we are all experiencing COVID-19 fatigue, but does that mean that we can ignore the scientific evidence and facts laid out in front of us that masks decrease transmission? As I mentioned earlier, we've had more than two hundred and twenty thousand Americans die from this virus to date. It's estimated to be more than three hundred thousand by the end of the year. That is equivalent to a hundred World Trade Center attacks and more American lives lost than occurred in both the American and Vietnam War combined. Please do the right thing, and I urge you to renew the mask mandate.
Thank you. Just so people know, the doctors have gone over cumulatively, if I've been tracking, about seven minutes so far. I'm going to award that time to the opponents, beginning with Dr. Merritt and Dr. Palmer. Just so you know, I'm tracking it. Next opponent, excuse me, proponent is the Chamber of Commerce, Jennifer Krieger, eight oh eight Conagra Drive, number four hundred, and then Mealy Mason. You'll follow that.
I have a letter from David Brown for you. Dear President, Chairman, members of the council, today we again reiterate our support for an extension of the City of Omaha's mask mandate. We do not take this position lightly. We understand the difficult position the council is in and the need to balance many important interests. As you know, the chamber historically has not favored government mandates as a general rule. From the start, the seriousness of this situation for our community and state has required ongoing evaluation of our priorities. We all find ourselves in an unprecedented situation with record rates of virus transmission and a possible vaccine still months away. We also continue to believe that every effort should be made to keep students in school and to keep our small businesses operating. With more than fifty-two thousand students in Omaha Public Schools alone and data indicating wearing a cloth face covering could save three point two billion dollars of economic activity in greater Omaha when compared to a full lockdown, our region cannot risk moving forward in an uncertain environment without masks. This is the time for continued focus on the common good. Left unchecked, the risk to our hospital institutions and our healthcare workers threatens to overwhelm our ability to care for those in need of medical care. There's also a serious threat to both students and small businesses if the mask mandate were to end prematurely. Let us all, as a community, make a strong statement about our collective public health. We accomplish more together when we commit to protect each other. Sincerely, David G. Brown, President and CEO. And I will get you a copy of the letter.
Thank you. Ms. Mason, followed by Luis Jimenez.
Hi, Mealy Mason, nine six three two North Thirty-fourth Street. I came for another issue, but when I found out this was on the agenda, I felt I had to stay. I spent last weekend in Kansas covering the spike in the cases in Kansas, and we interviewed several doctors, and they were almost in tears with the amount of people that they had to treat and dealing with the family members and who were not able to see their family members in ICU. And then Saturday, I found out that a good friend of mine in North Platte is in ICU on a ventilator. On Thursday, he celebrated his fourteen-year-old daughter's birthday. On Friday, he was in the ICU on a ventilator where he remains today. It happened that fast. I have three friends who have lost their parents, and they were not able to say goodbye. They were not able to be anywhere near them to give them comfort. It's a small issue to wear a mask, and I thank all of you for doing so. I think that you should keep the mandate, and I hope that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Jimenez, followed by Jen Camp.
Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six Burt Street. The speakers before me were on point, council members. I want to show you a picture of what a unified effort regarding a mask or wearing a mask looks like. So I'm going to use the screen here. This was early in the last century, and you have a stadium full of people wearing a mask during the Spanish Fever. And when things are done together, most often, virtually all the time, it leads to success. Thank you, council members.
Ms. Camp will be with the opponents. And the last person I have speaking as a proponent is Mohammed Jamali. Is Mohammed here?
Yes.
Come on down. Are you in favor of the ordinance or opposed?
Yes, I'm supporting.
Are you for it or against the mask?
No, I'm not against it. I'm supporting.
Okay. Name and address.
My name is Mohammed Jamal, nine one five, not a four, date of view, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. I'm president of the East African Community Association of Nebraska. I would like to support this mandate for masks because I know I've been walking for two thousand Somali refugees or Somali citizens who walk from leaving Omaha. Since you mandated for this one, August, we get the low positive, they go down, and that's helpful for the community. So I would like to support this, supporting for this mandated mask because it has been reducing for the COVID-19 positive in the community, and it's a very useful thing. And we encourage people using it because we know it is protecting people. Now, since you guys approved last August, we didn't have any positive cases. We didn't have anybody who had a COVID-19. So that means it shows positive things. So I would like to support this mandate, and thank you so much. You're doing a great job, and I will hope you will be voting for today. Thank you.
Thank you. We had one more sign in as a proponent, Cindy Maxwell Ostig, one six six two six Harney Welcome.
Hi, my name is Cindy Maxwell Ostig, and I live at one six six two six Harney Street here in Omaha. And I apologize, I'm out of breath. I just came from home. I drove all the way down here and parked, ran, trying to get here before this conversation ended. I have kids in school in Millard. I have kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and someone in our family has a pre-existing condition or an underlying condition, and so we do schooling remote at this time. And we, in our home, have been very careful and worn masks. We don't go anywhere that isn't essential, only to the I am the person in my family that runs errands and is in public. And if I'm inside anywhere, I... And if I'm inside anywhere, I wear a mask, and I don't go anywhere inside other than to the doctor's office or the pharmacy or grocery store. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But I came here because I felt it was essential. I am a mom, I'm a friend, I'm a coworker, I am a daughter, I'm a wife, and I'm a community member who is disappointed in my elected officials. From our failed response inside our country, we, as a community, have come down to our city council as our protection and for reason and adherence to science. I follow the recommendations of our pediatrician and the CDC and UNMC. Our numbers in Omaha are skyrocketing. And Saturday, I walked to my car and got in my car, and I had to run an errand, and I drove by party after party after party. I saw streets full of cars where people were attending the Husker game. And then in the Omaha World Herald, I saw a picture of a party at a bar in my neighborhood, and there were no masks in sight. I believe that we need leadership from our city council to please stand up unequivocally with science and let Omaha know how important it is so that we can try to curb this infection. We have people who are confused, and what prompted me today to come was because one more person on my Facebook wanted to talk with another person on Facebook and argue about how masks were dangerous. It's not a rule in Omaha if you're this many feet apart, or if you're outside, or if you're any other number of reasons. And it is just a constant dis and misinformation back and forth, and you all are contributing to it by not taking a stand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll call the opponents first. Dr. Lee Merritt, as you make your way down here, you would normally get three minutes, but I'm going to award you an additional four minutes. I assume you're splitting it equally. I'm going to do an extra eight minutes because I don't want to have to have our guy divide seven and a half. It's just easier to do that. So once you give your name and address, our dot com assistant down here will queue you in, Dr. Merritt, for seven minutes.
Okay. Lee Merritt, 18111 Q Street, Suite 105. Masks don't control viruses. They control people. It's not a small thing to wear a mask, and it's damaging to our society and devastating to our children, which is why I'm here again. I just returned from Washington DC where I was invited to speak at the White Coat Summit, and I reviewed a bunch of this literature. Now, in spite of what you heard, there's only been one, only one randomized controlled trials of the kind of masks that most of you have on, these cloth masks. 97% of the particles pass through, and you could test this yourself by just coughing with your hand in front of it. Or, but it also showed that people that wore cloth masks actually had six times more chance of having an influenza-like illness, viral upper respiratory disease. So it wasn't without risk. The Norwegian Government of Health just showed that they would have to mask 200,000 people in order to decrease transmission of COVID by one person a week. And the CDC, its own numbers in July showed that in both, they looked at people with COVID, people that didn't get sick, and in both categories, 85% of people said they always or usually wore a mask. 3.9% of people in the infected group or the COVID group said they never wore a mask. And finally, I know we mentioned Sweden, and people are making fun of Sweden, saying it isn't what they say, but here's true. 1.8 million children were never kept out of school. They're not wearing masks, no deaths, and the teachers are not getting this at any greater risk than the background population. Now, when I was out at the Washington DC summit, I actually had a chance to hear Dr. Brian Tyson. This guy set up an urgent care in the poorest county in America. He screened 20,000 people. He treated 1,000, over 1,900 people for COVID. He had zero deaths. He had one hospitalization. Now, why are we being told, you know, the problem which you're hearing here is you're being told, oh, we have to put on masks because it's the only thing that can save our hospitals and save people from dying. No. What you, what you're not being told is that there are very good protocols for aggressive early outpatient treatment of this virus that's saving lives, but is being censored off the internet. Even Peter McCullough from Baylor censored off the internet. Brian Tyson, I mean, these things, the stuff is out there, and we're not being told. You know, 40% of our deaths are in nursing home patients in Nebraska. For $5 a week, we could be prophylaxing them. We could be doing two tablets of hydroxychloroquine, zinc, C, and D. This has been well worked out other places. Again, it's being censored. Now, I get it that you guys are being put in a tough position because you're being told things, and you're kind of feeling like, well, if I don't pass this mandate, then all these deaths and this problem, the hospitals being overrun are on my head. No, that's on the head of the medical authorities that are ignoring the increasingly obvious evidence that we have treatment that works as an outpatient to prevent hospitalization. But what is on your head is the mask problem. And I had the opportunity to sit next to a pediatric psychiatrist when I was in Washington DC, and I talked to him, and I asked him a simple question. If we stop masking tomorrow, would it, would their children still be damaged, or would it go away? And he said, no, they would still be damaged. Not all of them. But the problem is that the most vulnerable among us, the smaller children, the people that, the children that have already had problems that don't come from stable homes, those are the ones that are going to carry lifelong problems from this. But as Cameron Crowe said, you know, every second that passes is a chance to turn it all around. I think it's a moral obligation not to do this, especially for our children, when there are other options. That's the point. There are other options. I urge doctors, and I urge you, to not just take what the authorities are saying. We've gone down that road before. It's time for independent thinking and really looking at the literature about this. It's convincing, and it can save a lot of lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tapper. He'll get seven minutes after he gives his name and address.
Okay, my name is Dr. Tapper, 16909 Burke Street, and thank you for allowing us more time. Okay, so again, my name is Dr. Tapper. I'm here to oppose this medical and government overreach. I want to start by stating that no emergency or threat of any kind on this planet supersedes our inalienable rights of the Constitution, and that includes a virus. These regulations are rooted and motivated by fear and propaganda. Roosevelt stated, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." In other words, fear is the virus. And my freedoms don't end where your fear begins. Mark Twain stated, "It ain't what you don't know that gets you into trouble. It's what you know for sure that just ain't so." You claim you're listening to the science. Well, science is listening through the lenses of observation. We can observe, what can we observe when looking at COVID-19? I've observed the majority of people that tested positive were asymptomatic. The few that were symptomatic presented no differently than the flu. I have observed with a broken heart are most vulnerable being trapped like prisoners in these nursing homes. While they protest, they'd rather die of COVID-19 than of loneliness. I have yet to observe the truth in what these regulations are based upon. I mentioned earlier, the Great Barrington Declaration was mentioned. 581,000 concerned citizens, 11,000 medical and public health scientists, and 32,000 physicians believe these lockdowns and restrictions cause more harm than good. At what point do we abandon the so-called experts' advice and listen to the other experts in opposition? I have a graph here from the Johns Hopkins University that stated, "These are the Sweden deaths. They had no restrictions, no lockdowns, and they didn't wear masks." Okay? Look at the deaths. This gentleman presented earlier with another graph. Why is there conflicting information being out there? I found this graph from the director, health director of Sweden himself. The daily death rate was declining, no restrictions. What does that tell you? That raises the question, why is there censorship? I see this problem, and I've experienced it firsthand, this sense of, this act of censorship. It's real, and it's happening to me and thousands of others that are screaming at the rooftops. George Martin stated, "When you cut out a man's tongue, you don't prove him a liar. You're only telling the world that you feared what he might say." When will it occur to people that all of these regulations and mandates are in fact a direct violation of our First Amendment of the Constitution? Need I remind you of the five freedoms in the First Amendment? On a personal note, and in my opinion, the most important is the freedom of religion. Earlier this year, the state deemed that churches were not essential and were not allowed to join together and take communion on Easter, the most sacred day of the year. In my faith, I believe the Holy Bible to be true. Its states do not fear over 365 times. I believe it was Jesus who was in violation of the social distancing laws when He laid His hands on and healed those with leprosy. I believe in Psalms 103, "He forgives all your sins and heals all diseases." Or Psalms 91, "If you make the Lord your refuge or your shelter, no plague will come near your home." I can't help but think of how Peter took his eyes off Christ and cowered to the wind and waves. You see, the church, this country, and the role of patriotism are like a great ship being pounded by waves of tyranny and evil. Our duty is not to abandon ship, but to keep her on course. Smooth seas never made for skillful sailors, and we must not fear adversity because it is only through it we grow stronger. The immune system is no different. We must give the body what it needs, and it can be well. I have studies that talk about 90% of the elderly are the ones that are dying, and the underlying factor is vitamin D3 deficiency. I was taught that we need to move away from toxicity and deficiency into purity and sufficiency. We do that by giving the body what it needs in supplementation, and eat right, move right, think right. You see, our body's not deficient of a Corona vaccine, nor can a mask do anything to make our body healthier. Cowering to this fear or hiding from this disease is taking the route of fools in the face of adversity, taking the easy route is what makes rivers and men crooked.
Jen Camp, followed by Vanessa Steele.
My name is Jen Camp. I'm at 13320 Laramore Avenue. I'm a disabled Navy veteran, and like you, have taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against enemies, all enemies, foreign and domestic. This is an oath that has ingrained in me and I believe every other military veteran. Our intelligence has been insulted. The Constitution was written to establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, promote general welfare, and to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. This has been threatened. Not only has our, is our Constitution absolute, nowhere in it does it mention that it may be violated during times of a pandemic or similar creation. According to the CDC website, over $76 million has been paid out to UNMC and its affiliates in Omaha in CARES Act money. That's just the amount I've had time to add up. According to the Tracking Accountability in Government Grant System or TAGs, UNMC has received over $112 million in grants and funding, with the state of Nebraska receiving over $184 million. Finally, according to the USASpending.gov, UNMC has received $1.9 million in funding due to COVID-19. This is on top of any insurance payouts already received. Back on that same CDC website is also a recent study which found that of those who have tested positive for the COVID-19 virus, more than 70% of those people said that they had always worn a mask during the previous 14 days, while another 14.4% said that they had worn one often. This data can be used to show that if masks are worn, the risk of being infected is about 85%. Seems crazy with a virus that has nearly 100% survival rate under the age of 74. With that said, it would seem as though most of the so-called experts you have been relying on for information on the efficacy of masks also have a financial gain if people get sick. And how about those experts? Where are the experts on mask-wearing? Where are the experts from OSHA? Most doctors do not decide what mask they're going to use in hospitals. They rely on a team of experts who do the research and testing for them. Why is that important? The masks recommended by these experts you have used are not only random and proven not to stop the spread of the deadly virus, but there are little to no specifications for them. Would you suggest that the same efficacy for a scuba diver, or for a firefighter, or for our military against chemical warfare? Should those people accept the same subprime standards and idiocracy of these masks we're suggested to use? Rest assured that we, the people, do not put these doctors on a pedestal or look to our government to be our savior. Since we all recited the same pledge of allegiance at the start of this meeting and claimed to be one nation under God, I believe it is appropriate to remind the people that tyranny will be far from you. You have nothing to fear. Terror will be far removed. It will not come near you, Isaiah 54:14. I also feel it is appropriate to remind you of Proverbs 18:2, which says that fools find no pleasure in understanding but delight in airing their own opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Steele, followed by Larry Stor.
My name is Vanessa Steele, and this is my very first time. I've never done this before, so.
So you're at 16050 South 120?
Yes. My address is 16050 South 120th Street. I'm in Springfield, Nebraska. I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska, grew up right off of 60th and Ellison Street. That was my home-home. I was convicted to come today because I am not a fan of the masks at all. I truly believe in the one and only God that has given us an amazing immune systems for each and every one of you sitting right there. I think that He has given us wisdom as well to discern what we should do, and I'm just going to continue to be praying for you all to have the discernment on what to do and make the best decision for Omaha. Last year, 1.4 million people died of tuberculosis. We weren't wearing masks at all. Why? Because the media wasn't enforcing that. This year, they're very much enforcing an agenda, and I don't really know what the underlying agenda is, but I have a dad that has a disease. It's myosthenia gravis. I have a niece who has cancer right now, and she got rid of it, but it came back. I see them on a weekly basis, and we don't live in fear, and we continue just to trust in God. God, you be over Jocelyn, be over her body. She's 11 years old. My dad is 70 years old, and he also doesn't live in fear. He goes to the grocery store. He goes to my kids' games. I have three boys, and I have one little girl, and we've been playing basketball a lot in Omaha. It very much frustrates me when my youngest boy, and my two older ones for that matter, when they're playing basketball, and when they're sitting down on the sidelines and they have to cover their face with a mask and suck wind in their own air. That's not okay with me. And I pray by the power of God that you guys can make an educated decision, that we, as the people, as Americans, can make our own decision and govern our own families and make what decision we think is best for ourselves and not have a mandate saying, this is what you have to do. I don't think that's constitutional, and I don't think that that's what you want for the American people. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Stor, followed by Chantel Wyatt.
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against this ordinance. The reason is, I've got a Bachelor of Science degree and 55-plus years on top of that of life and work experiences and attempts at being informed, reading, educating myself. So it's not that I'm uninformed. This is against the Constitution. Recent story from Wisconsin. Experts tell us that in Wisconsin, the suicide rate of young people has surpassed their rate from last year. Why? Well, the insinuation is because of lack of socialization, ala wearing a mask, for example. We've also heard in the past from experts that young children particularly learn from facial expressions, but we can't tell anything about that person that's wearing a mask because we can't see his face. We don't know if he's mad, angry, sad, or what. There've been lots of experts, scientific experts throughout history. Some of us call them progressives that want to say they know better than we do. And that applies to the Constitution also. But, you know, scientists can twist facts, they can twist things to make you believe what they want you to believe. Allah, Adolf Hitler, Margaret Sanger, Joseph Stalin, Mao Tseong. Did they not have scientists that advised them? This is not a very good advice in the long run. Thank you.
Chantel Wyatt, followed by Grace Ayers.
Chantel Wyatt, three six zero one North Nineteenth Street, six eight one one zero. Dr. Marguerite Greis-Bresson, M.D., Ph.D., is a German consultant, neurologist, and neurophysiologist with a Ph.D. in pharmacology with special interest in neurotoxicology, environmental medicine, neuroregeneration, and neuroplasticity. This is what she has to say about face masks and their effects on our brains. The reannulation of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flood of carbon dioxide. We know that the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. The acute warning symptoms are headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues in concentration, slowing of the reaction time, reactions of the cognitive system. However, when you have chronic oxygen deprivation, all of those symptoms disappear because you get used to it. While you're thinking that you have gotten used to wearing your mask and rebreathing your own exhaled air, the degenerative process in your brain are getting amplified as your oxygen deprivation continues. The second problem is that the nerve cells in your brain are unable to divide themselves normally. So in case our governments will generously allow us to get rid of the masks and go back to breathing oxygen freely again in a few months, the lost nerve cells will no longer be regenerated. What is lost is lost. There is no unfounded medical exemption from face masks because oxygen deprivation is dangerous for every single brain. It must be the free decision of every human being whether they want to wear a mask that is absolutely ineffective to protect themselves from a virus. For children and adolescents, masks are an absolute no-no. Children and adolescents have an extremely active and adaptive immune system, and they need a constant interaction with the microbiome of the earth. Their brain is also incredibly active, as it has so much to learn. The youth's brain is thirsting for oxygen. The more metabolically active the organ is, the more oxygen it requires. In children and adolescents, every organ is metabolically active. To deprive a child or an adolescent's brain from oxygen or to restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to their health, it is absolutely criminal. Oxygen deficiency inhibits the development of the brain, and the damage that has taken place as a result cannot be reversed. The child needs the brain to learn, and the brain needs oxygen to function. We don't need a clinical study for that. This is simple, indisputable physiology. Consciously and purposely induced oxygen deficiency is an absolutely deliberate health hazard and an absolute medical contraindication. I know how damaging oxygen deprivation is for the brain. Cardiologists know how damaging it is for the heart. Pulmonologists know how damaging it is for lungs. Oxygen deprivation damages every single organ. The imperative of the hour is personal responsibility. We are responsible for what we think, not the media. We are responsible for what we do, not our superiors. We are responsible for our health, not the World Health Organization, and we are responsible for what happens in our country, not the government. And I'll leave you with this. At that time, the disciples came to Jesus, saying, "Who is the greatest in the Kingdom of Heaven?" And calling to Him a child, He put Him in the midst of them and said, "Truly, I say to you, unless you turn and become like children, you will never enter the Kingdom of Heaven. Whoever humbles himself like this child is the greatest of Heaven. Whoever receives one such child in My name receives Me, but whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in Me to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone fastened around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea." Matthew eighteen, one through six.
Thank you. And anyone who can read that fast deserves a little extra time. Grace Ayers, followed by Katie Bodnar.
I'm Grace Ayers. My address is one five oh two two Y Cliff Drive. I'm speaking today for a friend who would lose their professional license and career if they spoke, which would tell everyone something about the agenda being pushed. I'm not here today to point out the flawed science of masks because there's many here who have already done just that. And I know you don't listen anyhow because in your eyes, we're nobodies, even though other leaders from other cities and counties and states responsibly listen to other experts from more than one source and point of view. Most of Omaha's city council members will only listen to those on UNMC's payroll. Instead, I will speak to the horrible treatment that Ph.D. Adi and Mayor Gene have encouraged against those who, for medical reasons, cannot wear a mask. During their many press conferences, neither Adi nor Gene have spoken to the treatment against those who cannot wear masks for medical reasons. Neither one has encouraged the public not to be horrible or abusive to those who cannot wear masks. However, many people with strong immune systems are unable to wear masks due to other unrelated health reasons. If you go to the FAQ section in the mask mandate on the Douglas County Health Department website, this twenty-seventh question, yes, you have to scroll that far. You will find one question addressing how to treat people without a mask. It is the last question on the page, and the wording is very telling. What do I do if I see someone not wearing a mask even though they should be? The last five words show Adi's complete and utter disrespect and disdain for those who cannot wear a mask even though she, as a health director, should know that there are legitimate reasons why many cannot wear a mask. Instead, those reasons are often ignored. Another important factor of the question's wording is that no one knows whether a stranger should be wearing a mask or not. Of course, since it's the last question, many people do not see it or realize it's even there. Many also do not see the answer, which tells people to do nothing because some people have health conditions or circumstances that would make wearing a cloth face mask difficult or dangerous. Just wear your face covering and stay six feet away, end quote. Though it's on the Health Department website, I've never heard Adi or Gene speak to that in a press conference, as previously mentioned. I wonder why, which leads me to my next point. It is incredibly unprofessional that neither the county health director nor our mayor, who is a former nurse, have ever once spoken to the city during press conference about the legitimate health reasons as to why some people should not wear masks. This tells critical-thinking adults that neither one of them cares about the health, but only compliance to orders. Again, it is apparent that Adi's goals are not about public health. Neither Adi nor Gene seem to care anything about efforts people can take to strengthen their long-term immune health. Neither has mentioned that at all. For them, the only thing that matters is whether Omaha residents are obedient in wearing a mask regardless of the damage they do to their own health. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Bodnar, followed by Victoria Flott. Katie? Okay. We'll hold it just in case she comes back. Victoria Flott. Gwendolyn Litson, followed by Scott Bush. Flip it around there. There you go. And then you zoom out. There you go. You got it.
I think the last time I used one of these was fourth grade. Okay. My name is Gwendolyn Litson. I live at one hundred and forty-sixth and Maple.
One four six oh six Boyd.
Yes, sir. That's right. Back in August, I told you you were asking the wrong question. It's not whether masks used in perfect situations could theoretically work to slow down the spread of the virus. It's when used incorrectly in filthy surroundings, do masks make illness worse? By now, we know, yes, masks make illness worse. We know that because the cases continue to rise. So today, I have only two questions for you. Given that 3M, our neighbors in Valley, made thirty-two-point-eight billion dollars in total sales in just 2018, and they only ranked ninety-five in the Fortune 500, and given that in 2019, 3M's advertising budget was three hundred and forty-eight million dollars, and given that the N95 respirator mask was developed by 3M and approved in 1972, the question we should be asking is, if 3M thought there was any legal way to claim that N95 masks stopped viruses, don't you think they would have been selling them for the last fifty-eight years to stop flu? Get a load of the warning. This is their technical specification sheet. Here's page three. Misuse may result in sickness or death. That's probably why they're not advertising N95 masks to stop viruses. Okay. So my second question to you. With a ninety-nine percent recovery rate, are people really afraid of catching COVID? The answer is no. If the self-appointed mask deputies were truly afraid of catching COVID and not simply trying to make others submit, they would not be out confronting strangers without masks and yelling at others with their noses sticking out. They would be running away from people without masks if they were afraid. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bush, followed by Cheryl Concannon or Concaman. Mr. Bush?
Scott Bush, one oh five two eight Sailor Plaza, Omaha, six eight one three four. And I'm not here to tell anybody about what the experts said on this side or the other side or anything else. I'm not an expert on masks or health or anything else. I'm just here to tell you how I feel about this, and that's really the only thing I can be an expert on. I have a lot of friends that feel the same way as me. I work in construction. I've worked in construction for over twenty years. I've worn a lot of masks for a lot of different reasons, but never because I thought they were going to stop me from getting sick. I've worn masks to stop particles. I've worn a respirator fed by oxygen in rooms that were inundated with ammonia. And I've worn things in situations like that where my health has been at risk. And I can tell you that if they're worn properly, they do work. In order for me to wear an oxygen respirator, I have to go in and get specially fitted for that apparatus. I have to shave my beard. I have to be completely clean-shaven in order for that apparatus to seal on my face and do me any good at all. These masks, I think, are fairly similar to that. If I have a beard and I have all this extra area around this mask that isn't covered, and I cough, where is all that going to go? I mean, air is the same as water. It travels the path of least resistance. So it's naturally just going to shoot out from the sides of my mask underneath, up through my eyes, or in some cases with the cloth masks that I have seen firsthand, I can blow marking chalk right through that mask with less than twenty PSI pressure. And I guarantee you, when I sneeze, I'm pushing through that mask with more than twenty PSI pressure with the sneeze, and that chalk goes right through that mask. So I don't know what those masks are supposed to do for my neighbor. Maybe if I feel unsafe, I'll wear one because it makes me feel better. But at the end of the day, are we creating a false sense of security here? Where people are now not doing the things that they should be doing, like washing their hands, disinfecting commonly touched surfaces, social distancing because this mask makes it okay? I'm safe because I wear a mask? Is that what we're creating in people? And we're making people rebellious and angry at their neighbors? Look at what we're doing to our community. We got neighbors calling the police on the guy next to him because he starts a fire in his fire pit, and there's four people sitting around it. We got neighbors calling the cops on each other because they're having a little kid's birthday. These are people that shouldn't, they should be at the birthday. I'm sorry, guys, but how much are we going to take away from our kids? We got Thanksgiving. We got Christmas coming up here. How much are we going to take away from our children? I'm an adult. I can make my own choice. I'm going to tell you right now, you guys can't make me do anything. But how much are we going to take from our kids? You know, that's what I'm concerned with. My son shouldn't be afraid of every kid that he goes to school with. People should not be afraid to go see their loved ones in a nursing home. People should not be dying alone because they're afraid that they're going to get somebody sick. I got a friend out in Hastie that didn't see her mom for four months because she had terminal cancer, and her mom was afraid of this virus. She died, and she didn't get to see her mom for four months. Now, you guys put yourself in her shoes. That's the type of grief she's never going to come back from. I think that's wrong. I think we need to stand up as Americans and face this thing head-on. We need to be able to make our own choices.
Thank you. Thank you. Cheryl Concannon or Concaman, and then Amanda Cameron.
Hello. My name is Cheryl Concannon. I live at one oh three eight one Nebraska Avenue in Amy's District. I've emailed in the past, but felt my voice needed to be heard today. My husband was a well-respected, prominent chiropractor and holistic doctor here in Omaha for over thirty years until he recently died of a very painful death of cancer. It all stemmed from a poorly-done canal done twenty years earlier by a licensed dental practitioner, who was at the time strung up on cocaine. Thankfully, that dentist lost his practicing privileges. Fast forward a few years, and we get nine eleven. At Christmas time, a nationwide call went out for chiropractors to go to New York and allow those that have been taking care of the first responders since day one the opportunity to have Christmas with their families. My husband jumped at the opportunity to serve his country. He was in St. Paul's Chapel, providing that much-needed adjustments to those first responders so they could continue to do their difficult job. They loved him. He was a people person. His voice, his laugh was contagious, and he was a big guy, so he could really, truly adjust those big, burly New Yorkers. Twice, he snuck him down to ground zero, and it honestly changed him forever. Unfortunately, he died of the same cancer as so many of those first responders that he worked on. The nasty air that he was breathing settled into that poorly-done canal and simmered for twenty years. Why did I tell you this story? A licensed dental practitioner caused an issue combined with breathing in the nasty air around ground zero that later, twenty years later, killed my husband at the age of fifty-seven. Adi Poor, Ph.D., is not a licensed medical practitioner. When you refer to her as doctor, that is misleading to the general public. To my knowledge, none of you are licensed medical practitioners. None of you have taken the Hippocratic oath to do no harm, and yet here you are practicing medicine. My point, my husband is dead, partially due to the actions of a licensed dental practitioner. That's one person too many. In twenty years, how many people will be dead due to various issues started and caused by the mask mandate for a virus with a ninety-nine percent survival rate that was imposed by all of you with zero medical licensure to do so? On the flip side, my mother will be celebrating her seventy-ninth birthday at the end of this year. She saw on the family farm, cuts her own wood for her wood stove, fixes fence, on zero medications, thanks to her healthy lifestyle, and is not afraid of this virus in any way. Life experiences give her much perspective. To Amy Brinker, God bless you, and thank you for continuing to fight for our very right to breathe and for our freedom to take care of our health. To the rest of the city council, God bless you as well, as I do not discriminate, and I would like to share a passage that I learned at an early age. Luke six, verse thirty-one, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you." I have one final thought. Fear does not stop death. It stops life. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Cameron, followed by Andrew Sullivan.
I'm Amanda Cameron, four one three, North Thirty-Ninth Street. An emergency is an unforeseen combination of circumstances or the resulting state that calls for immediate action. We had an emergency in mid-March. We were dealing with a new virus. We didn't know anything about it. We needed the hospital space, so we locked down. It's now over seven months later. The survivability rate for people under seventy is over ninety-nine percent. The mortality rate is down eighty-five percent. We have numerous therapeutics and ways to treat COVID. In addition, something that nobody's mentioned yet, flu rates are down ninety-five percent. If you look at the CDC data, and it's showing up all over the world for some reason, COVID beats flu. So our flu rates are down. It's not something, it's something we need to be wary of, but we're not going to be dealing with high rates of flu plus high rates of COVID this winter. So you'll have to forgive those of us who are no longer screaming at the sky, waiting for it to fall down on our heads. I'm here today because I fear this council's myopic concentration on the case numbers and masks, and that those subjects are blocking you from taking a more holistic view of this entire situation. I would appreciate it if, in your further discussion of the mask mandate and your discussions with health officials, if you would ask yourself the following questions. One of you recently expressed support for arresting the maskless. As we know, arrests don't always go easily. Are you prepared to deal with protests or even riots over a mask? Are there any other illnesses that require a large number of asymptomatic or healthy people to be tested in order to meet some benchmark? I honestly couldn't think of any. This five percent number, if we're talking about science, your hypothesis is that wearing masks will drive down the infection rate or the positivity rate to five percent. Your experiment is not supporting that hypothesis. Your experiment is failing. If your doctor puts you on a diet to lose weight so you can avoid diabetes, and three months later, you're still gaining weight, is he going to keep you on that diet? No, he's not. More questions. Since we locked down on March sixteenth, how many drug overdoses have we had in this county? I couldn't find any more stats more recent than 2018, to be honest. And how many suicides have we had in that timeframe? And how do those numbers compare to the COVID numbers? How many hospital beds are currently taken by people who have advanced conditions like cancer, who had to delay treatment or appointments when the hospitals were unavailable from March to May? How many? We have to consider more than this. At some point during all this, politicians like yourselves decided that any illness or death due to COVID was unacceptable, that deaths of despair were not, that any other deaths were acceptable, that it was okay to lock down people's dreams and livelihood for a single illness, and you're still threatening to do. for a single illness, and you're still threatening to do it. Adi Poor said last month that it was lockdowns or masks. I want you to truly, truly look at the whole picture and, of what your decisions are doing to this community. I want you to deep dive into all those graphs you got today. Because low numbers in places like Virginia, they still haven't opened up schools. Large swaths of New York City are not allowing in, in, uh, in restaurant dining. They only just opened up schools. You have to balance living with the risk. So please, I want you to really think about the path you want to take, and remember that the most authoritative and divisive path is not always the right one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Sullivan.
Council president, council members. My name is Andrew Sullivan of ten, um, of seven seven four eight Western Avenue. I want to thank you, by the way, for the patience that you've had with our speakers today. I was set to give a speech on how ineffective masks are and how they are not safety belts, a golden ticket, a vaccine or silver bullet. Overemphasis on masks and feeding false hopes has its own dangers as weak security. This shows in local statistics. I was going to explain how scientists practice science, but the layman has to do applied science and gets upset when it does not work, but experts complain to objections. However, an event reminded me how mandates create bullies and cowards. I thought excessive bullying would not happen, let alone to me, but it did. Not at a grocery store, not at work, not at a restaurant, but in this very room where the mask mandate was implemented and at this very podium. On October thirteenth, I went to the Douglas County Commissioners Meeting to express my concerns about the lack of skillsets of the county health director. I was as, I am now, in compliance with CDC's social distancing recommendations. As I started to speak, Democrat Douglas County Commissioner Mike Boyle and former mayor of this city interrupted me in spite of not having the floor, not being the chair, and having his mic off. He insisted I wear a mask and said it was the law when it is not. He knew the news media was not watching. His goal was to humiliate and bully me. Video of the speakers before and after me shows speakers did not wear a mask at the podium, including Senator Ernie Chambers. I am prepared for such confrontations, so my mask went up and I gave my speech. After I left the podium, Boyle continued verbally attacking me again when he did not have the floor and his mic was off. He told me I had no right to infect people, but how would he know my medical condition? Perhaps I am one of millions of Americans who have recovered from COVID, and I'm trying to enjoy my ability to smell again by not wearing a mask. He could not care less. My plea to the city council is to stop feeding the fear and the bullies. Instead, seek areas where everyone can agree. One idea is to pass a resolution to encourage people to get their vitamin D levels checked and take vitamin D. Vitamin D is crucial for the immune system in fighting respiratory infections. Because we get most of vitamin D from the sun, and the sun moves away in winter, all people need to be aware of vitamin D, vitamin D deficiencies and take vitamin D supplements. Health officials need to be strident in advocating for vitamin D, but there is none. Furthermore, I'm an insignificant and unimportant person. However, my words here need, are in dire need of a vast audience now. We are suffering a lack of capacity for civil dialogue. Without dialogue, there is no civilization, only an ugly dystopia. Council members, vote against this mandate, end the bullying, and allow all people to individually address their own risk tolerance to this virus. Thank you. I also will leave the copies for you here.
Just hand it to the clerk, please. Followed by Timothy Rexius.
Good afternoon, Ann Mao, two six two three, North one hundred and eighty-ninth Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, six eight zero two two.
I have to say, I asked how to pronounce.
It's okay.
I asked, is it Mao?
It's okay.
I was told Mola.
I get it a lot. I want to come to you today, in front of you, to, um, show you that COVID nineteen doesn't have to be a fatality. I have four autoimmune diseases. I have three daughters, two of them also autoimmune compromised. COVID nineteen was unknown and scary. At the end of February, I pulled all three of my daughters out of fear before they shut down the schools. Now, my children are not allowed back in school as I have done my own research, and as I had one child with social anxiety wanting to wear a mask so no one could see her face, and the other two showing physical damage from wearing the mask eight hours a day. There are special needs kids in our city that are non-verbal, that are wearing these masks eight hours a day in the schools, coming home with yeast on their face now, children with bottoms with rashes from the sanitizers, sanitizers being used on the seats, hypoxia. I had to help another mother yesterday in my school district with her child, who is now breathing heavily from the inflammation that the mask has caused, her son. I am begging for the choice for mask, please, from all of us, may we please have this freedom back? Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Rexius, followed by Britt Alexandra.
Timothy D. Rexius, one one seven two zero, Crier Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one four four. I am the president and CEO of the Rexius Nutrition Store chain based here in Omaha, Nebraska. We are stores across seven states. I founded the company in Omaha ten years ago. I'm also the founder and CEO of Iron Heaven Gyms, two fitness facilities here in Omaha, as well as the chairman and CEO of Vital Health International. We sell products across Amazon, all fifty continental United States, or the United States and the three other countries. I'm not saying that to be braggadocious. I'm saying I employ a hundred families in the state of Nebraska. We've made it through the first part of COVID when we were all scared. We didn't know what was going to happen. We were lucky enough to have the government to give us PPP financing, idle loans, the state of Nebraska gave us grants, Iowa gave us grants. I have stores in many cities across many states. The biggest catastrophe to happen to our business is since when you guys enacted the mask mandate. I saw less than a three percent drop the first four months of all this going on when everyone was scared, diminished hours. We were able to make it work. I was able to keep every single employee of mine at full pay the entire time, even though I didn't get a check. Then come the mask mandate. We have a twenty-six percent drop in foot traffic in the last sixty days in the city of Omaha alone, twenty-three percent down in revenue sales. People do not want to shop with a mask on. It's fear. Either they're gonna be, they're afraid of the virus. Granted, that's a lot to do with media, I can't do anything about that, or they're afraid they're going to be assaulted by people verbally for not wearing a mask. Either way, retail is suffering massively. Doesn't look like our, um, the federal is going to approve anything else, so we have to make, deal, deal with what we have now. The mask mandate is hurting business. Now, I have a hundred families, and they have kids. I have six children, between twenty months and twenty years. I myself have an autoimmune disease. So does one of my sons. We don't wear masks unless we have to. I'm respectful of it wherever it needs to be done. I'm a businessman. I don't pick sides. Michael Jordan in the nineties, Democrats and Republicans buy tennis shoes, that's me. But this, in this case, green is a color we do have to focus on. If I don't have the pay, I have to tell each one of those families and their kids that they might not have a job tomorrow or next month. There is a limit to how much we can stretch in retail. We have that many people employed, so I'm asking you guys not to continue the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Britt.
Hi, Britt Alexander, eighty seventy-seven Glenview Drive. Masks, where it only applies to people when it's convenient. Why I say this? I say this because, you know, it's not about a virus or disease when, you can go to a bar, restaurant, and take a mask off when you sit down, yet your children have to wear them all day while at school, sitting at a desk. When you can go to, when you can go shop at Sam's, Costco, Hy-Vee, Target, yet your small business had to close. When you can roam around the store, yet your children are being told Halloween needs to be canceled. When you only wear a mask when the store tells you to, yet you choose to wear one at all the ballgames, get-togethers, cookouts. To not wear one at ballgames, cookouts, and get-togethers. When you can stand in line at a store or gas station, yet they want mail-in voting. I've told you before, I'm a shopper, and at the outlets, there's a store with no sign, and I seen a gal and her friends in there with no masks. I see her in a different store, and they have them on because the door had a sign. When you can go in and out of bars, yet my family member is being isolated in an assistant living tiny room for the past month and a half, and we can't go see her, that is inhumane. This is about power, politics, and money in complying. We have a survival rate of ninety-nine point seven, yet you still sit here wanting to mask us. You want to mask us, Ben Gray, till we hit a positivity rate that equals five percent or less for two consecutive weekly reports. Really? Because the flu had a higher rate than that. I wanted to give some testimonies of family and friends that are having to deal with this. A teacher. I have emails from twenty different parents on kids with complications from wearing masks. I have a friend who is a single mom of a six-year-old who has yet to return back to school because of the mask mandates, and he cannot wear one due to an exemption. His mental health has declined drastically. He used to be a happy, funny kid, full of life, and now he suffers from anxiety, he has stopped eating. It has gotten so bad that her doctor, her pediatrician, has recommended to take him to a child therapist. Luckily, she had a friend that referred her to one because children's is on a wait list. My mom, this comes from another friend. My mom hasn't been able to see my stepdad in California for almost three months. He has been in the hospital in skilled nursing for surgery complication. He had at least ten negative tests, and my mom has tested negative. One nursing facility argued with them that phase time is enough contact with them until he is able to recover and leave. So I hope and pray you all take into consideration the doctors and those of us who are speaking out and showing science and real graphs. And Dr. Khan, I am a Republican, and I take to your liking as being KKK racist, and you have no business speaking here.
Ally French, followed by Mary Duarte.
My name is Ally French, at forty-two thirteen North one hundred and seventy-second Street. And while you, the city council members, might have had good intentions, what have you per, what you have perpetrated on this community has had terrible outcomes. Your staff supplied eighty-five pages of absolute propaganda based on outright lies and manipulated data. All of the studies related to masks slowing the spread of COVID nineteen are not randomized controlled studies. They were not evaluated for risk of bias. They all were limited in the fact that they could not evaluate actual levels of compliance. Many were funded by organizations with history of fraud, manipulated and withheld data, and authors that declared conflicts of interest, i.e. receiving monetary incentive outside of the study. Almost everything else was anecdotal. One interesting piece, and there discussed reduced inoculation from wearing masks. Note, this is by design. If everyone can get side effect-free immunity through frequent exposures without a mask, then there's no need for a vaccine. We, however, have provided ten times the number of studies providing established and well-supported evidence predating twenty-twenty as well, that masks not only don't help, but when worn by the public almost all improperly in contaminated environments, environments make the situation worse. In fact, when you examine the actual risks of masks rather than just the faked benefit, you'll find that this is hurting our children and community, and that's on those of you whom voted for it. No one here has discussed the fact that these masks contain Teflon and other chemicals, they are sterilized with ethylene oxide, a known carcinogen, guys. The mask that Doc, that Ben Gray, excuse me, is wearing, is one of the commercial masks. You can look up the U.S. patent. It contains PTFE. It will cause lung cancer if you inhale it regularly. Cloth masks are completely useless against a virus and also very dangerous. Rebreathing your own viral debris is dangerous, and the oxygen deprivation children suffer wearing masks all day will certainly cause brain damage, all for a virus with a ninety-nine percent survival rate. So while you all carry on about positive rates, excuse me, I'm gonna throw this one up for the time being, so you can see that. So while you guys all carry on about positive tests, in fact, Dr. Mike Eden, former vice president, chief science officer for Pfizer for sixteen years, stated a true positive does not necessarily indicate the presence of viable virus. These tests simply measure the presence of partial RNA sequence present in intact virus, which could be a piece of dead virus, that cannot make anybody else sick, guys. If you're asymptomatic, you're not spreading the virus to anybody. There's, we need to stop testing people that are asymptomatic. The claim was to implement this mandate in order to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. It's been nearly three months, and you've not reduced the spread of COVID nineteen, and compliance is visibly high. Maybe not in this room today, but that's because we've actually worked together to get here. If even the common cold can result on a positive test, you will never reach the metrics you plan to implement. You guys are asking for less than fifty cases in a two-week period. It's never going to happen. We did not elect your advisors. They do not get to determine how we live our lives, and we have a right to choose our own preventative measures and treatments. We can no lo, when you can no longer hide behind Adi Poor, Ph.D., and UNMC's manipulated graphs and fear mongering, when cases continue to rise, will you re-review the duration? Or is this one of those vaccine cons where we just silently quit testing and at some point then shout the success of your measures because the numbers subsequently dropped? Or will we be wearing masks for the unforeseeable future? If you cannot keep your oath to our constitution, if you cannot be honest, if you cannot put it, put our children and community above this agenda, you should recuse yourself. I may look like one mom, but I speak for thousands. I'm the co-founder of several groups containing up to thirty thousand people, guys, and we all disagree with you. We will not comply. We are not going away, and you are harming our children, our spouses, our parents, and permanently and directly. You will see justice served if we don't end this now. Just let it run out, and let's move on.
Thank you. Mary Duarte, followed by Mary Hitecamp. Mary Duarte? Mary Hitecamp? Is, did Victoria Flott or Katie Bodnar come back?
No. Hello, city council, and thank you. My name is Mary Hitecamp, four eight six five F Road. I'm from Dunbar, Nebraska, and I did frequent Omaha for different things, but I no longer do just because of the mask mandate. I thought it was interesting that Dr. Lawler contradicted Adi Poor by saying that ninety percent are wearing masks. He gave us the so-called proof. And again, if masks work, shouldn't we at least see some decrease in the number of cases, even just a little bit, compared to when we did not have a mask mandate? I don't know if it is true, but I have heard you will be basing your decision on the number of cases per one hundred thousand people in the city, yet I know of people testing positive, going back after fourteen days and testing positive, and going back and testing positive, and again, testing positive. Are these people also going to be in that number of cases? I would assume so. Dr. Merritt spoke of protocols available that doctors have, used with almost one hundred percent success rate. I have an eighty-six-year-old father-in-law. He has COPD, heart disease, and cancer. He got COVID. We made sure he did not go to UNMC, a hospital that, as we have heard, is clearly run by money. We made sure he went to a hospital that truly cares about humanity, that employs protocols that work, even letting, even letting us as visitors in one at a time, unlike UNMC that is still not allowing people in. He was treated quickly and fully recovered. I, who am immune compromised myself, did not wear my mask when in the hospital room with my contagious father-in-law. I did not catch this highly contagious virus. I share these things because not everyone dies and not everyone catches it. I, too, worry about what we are doing to this whole generation of children. I have six grandchildren, and I am concerned. I was recently at a craft fair where we were not required to wear masks, nor were the people who came in. I saw a family come in with four children, and I could tell the family did not believe in masks. None of the adults were wearing them, none of the children were. But the oldest boy, who was probably about fourteen, he had a hoodie on, and he walked around, and he kept looking at people and pulling it up over his face. What have we done to these children? What have we done? Lastly, I, regarding the people, I, I listened with sadness to this lady who shared that her family does not go anywhere, that they do not deem essential. Is this how we want to live our lives? What a sad narrative. Is this how we want people to be, living apart from other people, not enjoying the things that we should be enjoying, not being able to gather together as families for celebrations? And, I mean, is this the life? You guys, this is out of fear. We cannot, what happened to a generation of people that, that lived and that were strong and faced things head-on? The Bible says in Hebrews nine twenty-seven, it is appointed once for man to die, virus or no virus, our time is set, and the way that we die, we will die. We cannot... We cannot live in fear. Please vote against this.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Council member Gray, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Lawler, if I could call, is Dr. Lawler still here? If I could call you up real quickly, I just wanted to, well, first of all, let me just say what I don't want you to do. I don't, I don't want you to respond to the personal attacks and the negativity. I don't want you to respond to that. What I do want you to respond to is the, the issue about masks and that they don't work, number one. And number two, and, and let me say this. Prior to being on this council, I was a journalist, and I spent significant time in UAL's hospital. And I've watched doctors do, from open heart surgery to other things, and I've watched those masks be on for, because I had to work overtime because the operation took so long. So I just want you to respond, you can add, you can respond to a couple of other things, but I just want you to respond to the masks. And the fact that they, whether they do or they don't work, that they do, someone just told me that I could catch cancer. Okay, I, I want to hear that too. But what I wanted to hear, first of all, is the thing about masks and how they work. And if they, and, and if they do or don't work, and the, and the, and I know you've given the statistics and others about that, but just your general response in rebuttal, please.
Certainly, thank you. So I think a couple of points are...
Dr. Lawler, we need your...
Name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, hi, Dr. James.
There's a recorder, and so we need to know who's speaking. That's what...
Yes, sorry, Dr. James Lawler, and, hang on, let me get our address here at the Med Center.
It's 984355 Nebraska...
That sounds right, yes, thank you, sorry.
I said it a few times today.
Thank you. So I think a few things are important to note about face masks and their ability to interrupt person-to-person transmission. Masks are not perfect. I don't think any epidemiologist or physician or scientist would claim that they are. As Dr. Lowe pointed out in his graphic, they are an important part, and maybe one of the most important parts of a layered system of defenses against transmission. So we don't have a silver bullet against this virus. Even when we get a vaccine, as we know, vaccines do not give perfect immunity. They don't give immunity to everybody who takes a vaccine, but when we give it to an entire community, they can create enough barriers to transmission that we can protect the community, and that's what face masks do. They are part of a series of interventions that include things such as social distancing, that include things such as hand hygiene. But we do know that face masks reduce the amount of virus that a person sheds. We do know that people who are asymptomatic can actually shed infectious virus and can infect other people. And we know that quite frequently, the vast majority of people who become ill with COVID have a period of time before they develop symptoms when they are shedding. So we know that face masks can reduce, not eliminate, but reduce the amount of virus that they do shed, and therefore reduce the risk to those around them. We also know that face masks probably provide some protection to the wearer as well. And when you combine those two factors, reducing the shedding from people who are ill and shedding virus, and potentially creating a barrier of protection for the wearer, you get additional benefit. With respect to any dangers or hazards of wearing a face mask, as I mentioned in my previous comments, we have colleagues at the medical center who work every day wearing face masks, surgical masks, in the operating room. And, you know, I would, I would challenge any of you to, to take on some of my operating room nurse or surgeon friends to a game of trivia. I have not seen any decrement in their cognitive function related to wearing a face masks. Obviously, the pore size in a face mask is, you know, not nearly small enough to inhibit the flow of gases like oxygen and carbon dioxide. So they do not cause buildup of carbon dioxide. They do not restrict oxygen access to, to the lungs. So we have ample evidence that face masks are perfectly safe to use. I work in a biocontainment unit. I've done work in the field in outbreak response. I've worn N95 face masks, which have a higher filtering capability than your standard masks for many, many, many hours, for days and days and days on end, and have not had any physical adverse consequences because of that. So I think the, the vast weight of scientific evidence says that face masks do work in, in reducing spread in the community. And again, it's a social contract that we make with each other, right? My wearing my face mask protects everyone around me, and when everyone around me wears a face mask, they help to protect me. And we know that these face masks are, are safe.
Thank you, doctor. That was kind of all I had in, in relationship to them, because I just wanted to respond, wanted you to respond to the mask.
Sure, thank you.
You know, I'll come back a little later, and I'll talk about the amendment that I, that I introduced. You know, I'm not necessarily married to it, but we can have, I want to have discussion about it. I do want to say a couple of other things, though. Having, working on the Douglas County Board of Health and coming in contact with the staff, the personnel, and Dr. Poor specifically, and I will mention Dr. Khan, to the extent that, you know, when we talk about people having an agenda and questioning people's authority and ability. To have an individual like Dr. Poor, who has to have security, because we are, we call ourselves a civilized society, yet she has to have security. I was bothered at the last meeting that we had of the Board of, Board of Health when one of our main doctors, who has to live in fear because someone did a statue outside of her house and left a certain questionable gesture on that. When we have individuals who have trained for years and years and years and have done the kind of work that they have done. Dr. Khan, I can't imagine that you would, I mean, that you had some sort of an agenda when you were in Africa, first running across Ebola, and risking your life for the third, for several times that you have been overseas addressing this. I find it hard to believe that you all or anybody else has an agenda. I'm, I'm quite positive that the University of Nebraska Medical Center doesn't have an agenda. I think what they're trying to do is advanced medicine, as we saw with their IXL program last week. So I'm not buying the story about somebody having an agenda. I just don't buy that. I think that's ridiculous. But I do have a concern about the safety sometimes that you all have to, and that you have to have individuals so that you feel safe. I know we hear from the other side where people get bullied and so forth, but the other side of that is you all being threatened and having to have security at your homes. I find that unconscionable in what is supposed to be a democratic society where people allegedly listen to each other. I know that's not true, but the fact of the matter is, you all have to live like that, and that's unfortunate. But I want people to know the other side of the story as well, and the kinds of things that you all face because you believe so strongly in your convictions and you believe so strongly that this is the method out. And when I see individuals come and tell me that masks don't work, when I watch on my television screen every night here in Omaha, places where you have hundreds of people, none of them wearing masks, different environments around this entire community where you have hundreds of people, none of them wearing masks, and you tell me masks don't work. I'm not buying the story. I'll come back and talk about the, the amendment in a minute, but I'll, I'll yield the floor at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. I, I didn't want to steal your thunder, but I was going to tell you that.
Then I'll come back and talk, I'll talk about the amendment. The reason for the amendment is, I've talked to several, not only here locally, but I've talked to other doctors as well, and I've made contact with a couple of friends that I know at Cleveland Clinic, where I was born and raised. And this data is a compilation of, of data that I've gotten both locally and nationally. And so my thought behind this was, because it was mentioned on this council a couple of weeks ago about having some sort of metric in place that we thought would be fair. This is one of the metrics that I have gotten collectively from several people that I have talked to, not just here in Omaha, but here as well. And I thought, rather than continue to have meetings every two weeks or three weeks and go through this whole dialogue over and over again, I thought that if there were a metric, a metric in place, that we could, once we reach that metric, then we can revisit this issue as opposed to coming back every two weeks or so. That was my intent. Like I said, I would, I'm not married to it because we, we have to be here anyway. So, you know, if, if we want to go through this whole thing every two or three weeks, we can do that. But I thought with a metric that was reasonably talked about or reasonably suggested to me by several people, including our professionals here and some professionals that I know at Cleveland Clinic, this is the number that we, that I came up with. So that, that is my, that was my intent for the amendment to the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. And I would just let the opponents know, and all those perhaps that were watching. I was a little giving leeway on the time today because Dr. Tapper and Dr. Merritt graciously did not use all of the extra time that, that the opponents were allotted to respond and, and sharing their testimony. So I, I was giving a little leeway to the other opponents. Madam Clerk?
Non-action items, items 39 through 62, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second roll call.
Harding. Melton. Paul. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 5:01.